Good evening to the open session portion of our meeting. The Board did start tonight's meeting at 6:30. We were in executive session to discuss the potential purchase of property that may have a detrimental effect if we had public discussion on our negotiating position. There is nothing further at this time to report on that matter. We had a little technical difficulty getting started after that, but now we're ready to go. So my apologies for those who have been waiting. We have a 7 o'clock appointment with the Center for Social and Demographic Research on Aging at UMass Boston. Who's taking the lead in that discussion?
Caitlin.
Caitlin?
Yes, this is Caitlin Coyle. Can you all hear me?
Yes, fine.
Okay, great. Well, I'm thankful that we can gather, even if it's remotely, to share the work of the Age Friendly Norwood Project that we've been working on in partnership with Keri for the last few months. Before I start, just wanted to, you know, thank Keri for her patience and her leadership on this project, as well as the -- in being interviewed by us. I have Wix who participated with me tonight, Beth Rulo, who's on the meeting, who was integral in terms of collecting information for this project. So I'm just going to briefly talk about, you know, what we did and how it fits into the age-friendly initiative that Norwood has undertaken, and then talk a little bit about the results and the recommendations that we've come up with, as well as leave a little bit of time for questions if we can. So for those of you who don't know or may have forgotten, Norwood is considered an age-friendly community, is on the road to being a more age-friendly community, and I'll talk a little bit about what that means. But really, the definition of it is that it's a place that optimizes opportunities for health, participation, and security for people of all ages, really with a focus on independence and dignity and allowing, supporting people to age in their communities. This is a framework that was developed out of the World Health Organization globally about eight years ago in response to a couple of shifts that they observed happening, one being the demographic shift of people living longer, and the other being people's desire to age in community and in toward, you know, sort of going back to community centers and cities to age. And so they gathered experts from around the world and sort of put together a framework for the kinds of things that a community needs to consider as they think about becoming an age-friendly community. And those topics, domains is what they call them, are shown here on this flower image, but they include very broad categories, including things like housing and transportation, communication, respect, and inclusion, and things of -- imagine that although this model was motivated by population aging, it is a model of community improvement that has -- and so, benefit for people of all ages. The purpose of our deck and the report that we've prepared is to develop an understanding of Norwood's assets, as well as their needs of the older adult community, and provide preliminary ways for which Norwood's age-friendly features could be improved upon. So again, a little reminder of history of where you guys have been with respect to the age-friendly work. As members of the Nippon City River Regional Chamber of Commerce, we're accepted into the network, I believe, back in 2019. There was a event about a year ago, and over the course of this, oh, to date, we've been working on a community needs assessment. And when I say network and sort of accepted into the network, specifically what I'm talking about is the AARP network of age-friendly communities here in Massachusetts. So in addition to the World Health Organization, AARP has become the Western affiliate of that initiative. And so communities here in the U.S. who commit to being age-friendly do so through a process at AARP that involves some reporting requirements, as well as the reports like the one that we've prepared for you. And in addition to that, Governor Baker had, in 2018, February of 2018, did announce that he would like the entire state of -- he committed the whole state to being an age-friendly state, which is the second state in the U.S. to do so, and now I think there's four or five additional states who have joined us. And so really, there's a motivation from a high level for each community -- these in Massachusetts to really take a look at themselves and think about how they can be supportive of people aging in their community. So we are here in December 2020 to share with you the needs assessment work that we've been conducting, and just to preview some next steps or remaining steps in the ways that, by way of the AARP requirements, would be to establish, you know, an age-friendly Norwood steering -- sort of take the information that we've gathered here, identify gaps in information, as well as to put an action plan in place. They like, AARP says that needs to be done in about a year, but I think they're pretty flexible with that. And then, once you have that action plan put in place, to implement the action plan in partnership with your steering committee and the folks who have been participating in the partnership to date. So again, that's just a little bit of background in sort of why we did what we did. So we worked, again, with Keri and others in the town to conduct a community needs assessment, really highlighting three things, I think, existing momentum in Norwood, identifying the strengths of the community, and then highlighting the needs of the community, and tying in some recommendations for how those needs could be met using the age-friendly work. So what did we do? Is we reviewed existing data from the American Community Survey, putting together a demographic profile. We reviewed relevant reports and planning documents that have been done both by the town of Norwood, but as well as other organizations, including the hospital community needs assessment that was done in 2020. We conducted several key informant interviews. In some cases, we talked to folks multiple times because, as you see at the note at the bottom, we were smack dab in the middle of COVID-19 when we were planning to hold public forums and focus groups with residents. Obviously, those things were canceled slash postponed, and so we had to take a bit of a pause in the project, and we hope that at some point we can, you know, be supportive of resuming that work or identifying additional sources of information. So what you're going to hear tonight is about those pieces that we were able to do. And I'll just share briefly some demographic information that many of you are likely familiar with. This comes from, most of this comes from the 2018 American Community Survey estimates, but what you see here in this slide includes projections by the Donahue Institute at UMass Boston, or UMass -- what you see is that you are, by 2035, nearly 32% of Norwood residents will be age 60 or older. And I think what's interesting here is that when you look across your 60 group, you're actually seeing most of the growth that's happening in the town of Norwood is happening in that older adult age bracket. So when we think about the changing, the shifting demographics in Norwood, when we think about the growth of the population, a lot of that is really happening in that 60-plus population. Again, another piece of information is that among those 65-plus in Norwood -- that's actually pretty high, higher than what we see in other communities. We've been doing this work since 2012. We've worked with over 40 cities and towns in Massachusetts, and that 34% is slightly higher than we typically see. And I think part of that is the amount of rental properties and apartments that you have in Norwood. But again, that signals to us, in thinking about how to prepare for supporting people as they age, considering the implications of living alone, is going to be something important to keep in mind. We also know that many homeowners in Norwood are over age 60. Again, this is important to note as we think about being able to support people to age in place. They own their own home, and so thinking about the kinds of supports that they're going to need with, in terms of offsetting costs of that homeownership, as well as maintenance and repair. We also see a high rates of disability among the 65-plus population, so we've got, you know, close to, you know, 36% of your seniors report at least one disability. And when I say disability here, I'm referring to sort of physical -- able to conduct their activities of daily living, so reporting at least one challenge with an activity of daily living. And this, again, speaks to, I think, a lot of the physical aspects of an age-friendly community in terms of accessing sidewalks, intersections, public buildings, transportation, really thinking about, you know, we talk about the 60-plus population a lot, the 65-plus population. Within that group, there's a lot of diversity, and there are many, there's multiple generations within that age group. And so I'm highlighting these aspects of the population to kind of shed some light on the idea that when we think about an age-friendly community, it's not, there's not one version of aging that we're designing for, that it's really taking into account all of the needs of the population in Norwood, regardless of their -- Another striking aspect, durability of older adults in Norwood. Again, information that you're probably relatively familiar with is the idea of economic security. And so we know that given retirement and exiting the workforce, folks 65-plus have a more fixed income. And so what you see here is the population age 65 compared to those who are age 45 to 64 with respect to their household income. This is the median household income, so it's really, and it does not include wealth, would be the other caveat here. So this is really about income. But what you see is that about double the number of people age 65 are living on incomes of less than $25,000 a year compared to 11% of those in that younger age bracket. And you can see that that, you know, just sort of trends towards more economic insecurity is happening in Norwood. And so again, thinking about what is it going to take to support people in the community and help them live prosperously and healthy in the community, thinking about the economics of that is going to be important. So moving on, I'm going to just talk, I know we have limited amounts of time, and there's lots of information in this report that I'm not going to get to, so I'm going to just try to hit the highlights so that we can leave some time for questions. I'm going to just walk through the domains and talk a little bit about sort of the high points of how age-friendly Norwood is with respect to some of these items. And so this is a description of the housing-related needs in Norwood. I think the big takeaways here are the economics of it in terms of, you've got 25% of people age 65 who are, who have a mortgage and who are considered cost burdened by their housing, meaning that they spend more than 30% of their monthly income on housing costs, including mortgage, maintenance, utilities, and things like that. And then that's 14% of people who do not have a mortgage are considered cost burdened. And again, this idea of owning your own home and living alone and really thinking about what the implications are for that. Obviously, we know housing stock in our state and in the New England region is a need all over the place. It's not just Norwood, but thinking about suitable downsizing options and really thinking about the affordability for the average resident of those options. So we make several recommendations for how you can both increase sort of public awareness of how people can, you sort of explore using their home equity in retirement and in later life to plan for things, and to really kind of think about how to support people in small ways, in terms of providing lawn care, snow removal, but also in this, in this larger sense of trying to shift the conversation towards planning for the future as opposed to reacting to the crisis when it comes to thinking about how to house, house themselves later in life. Transportation issues, we've got, you know, sort of this idea of intra-Norwood transportation, being able to get around town. You've got your senior center transportation, which is wonderful, but it is limited in terms of its time and capacity, as well as, I think, people's perception of using it. And then you've also got the need for medical appointments with the closure of the hospital, and just in general, people needing to get to medical appointments that may be a -- being something that's a continuing need out of Norwood as being. And then, so we've got recommendations related to that, and part of that is to think about the ride-sharing service, either, you know, trying to continue to train people to get familiar with that, developing a volunteer driver, driver program. I was in one community recently where they had only a couple of Uber drivers in town, and they ended up, one of the staff, the senior center part-time staff, decided to start driving Uber on the side, and they were, it really helped with people feeling more comfortable using those ride-sharing services. The person who was driving, but you could also think about profiling them, because they knew the newsletter or something like that, to try to get people a little bit more familiar with, with the Uber folks in town. Outdoor spaces and buildings in Norwood, you guys have done quite a few things in response to COVID-19, to promote the use of outdoor spaces and to get people to be able to gather outdoors, and so to continue to think about how those responses can be continued beyond COVID-19, if there is such a thing. And to think about, again, that disability rate among older residents, highlighting the need to ensure the accessibility of public buildings, outdoor spaces, and not just around ADA compliance, but also around things like signage and lighting and railings and things like that, that can really make it not just accessible, but sort of easy to access. Community supports and health services, I think the big takeaway here was around the increased demand for mental and behavioral health, helped by a number of key informants, as well as was identified in the Norwood Hospital Assessment. So really thinking about, you know, you have several organizations in town and coalitions in town who are addressing various aspects of that, but really thinking about how those groups can coalesce to raise awareness of the resources that are available, as well as to think about continued training and support of some of your first responders in town, staff around the issues of mental and behavioral health needs, specifically for older adults, although I'm sure an issue that affects people of all age. So social participation, the things that kind of struck out, struck out, or stood out to us was this idea of, especially during the pandemic, but also before and after that, there's a need to increase social opportunities for people who are homebound, to be able to participate socially and to feel connected with the community. There's this idea of trying to entice, you know, younger seniors to participate, both at the senior center, but also just in general, when we think about communities, oftentimes there's a lot of stuff going on at the schools, and there's a lot of stuff for seniors, and then you find, you know, there's sort of a gap in social programming at that sort of middle, middle ground. So people who perhaps have kids in college or have, are empty nesters but are not quite considering themselves yet, and so thinking about ways to fill that gap. And then also noticing that there's extensive programming available through the town. However, thinking about the availability of informal social connections among neighbors and residents seems to be less robust, although, again, we're talking about limited sources of information that we're drawing on here. But again, trying to think about ways to just sort of get people better connected, maybe informally or at the neighborhood level, is something that we identified. So some ideas for that are to, you know, try to engage super users, so one or two younger seniors, to either join the board or serve as advocates. You know, in other communities, we've seen where people say, you know, this is the cheapest yoga class in town, you know, bring your friends, talk, talk it up, that kind of thing, to try to entice some, some new participants at the senior center. Obviously, the economic security issues indicate the need slash desire for either part-time, flexible employment or cost-saving, additional cost savings programs. So we know you have the property tax work-off program as one of those, as well as some of the regional resources around employment, but thinking about ways to work with those partners and just support people's interest in volunteering. I think one of the things we talk about is, you know, the state cap on the property tax relief program is $1,500. As far as I know, I think you guys are at $750,000 as far as the most, the amount of money that people can earn off their taxes. And so considering shifting that to incentivize more participation, as well as getting creative about the positions that people can work, especially during the time of COVID, in terms of thinking about, you know, things that people can do remotely, whether they become sort of key informants of the town and intended to spread word-of-mouth information at a micro level, and sort of volunteer for the community in that sense, or other things. The other way we identified, trying to increase people's participation civically, is to think about piloting a civic academy program, which gives residents an opportunity to learn the basics of municipal government and offers a pipeline for board and committee applicants. Again, getting folks who are in, who are aging, although that's really all of us, to sort of think about how they can give their perspective to the various boards and committees is another way to address these issues. Respect and inclusion in Norwood, the things that we, in addition to the isolation, which we know is a huge deal, both before COVID as well as now, we also know that you, that Norwood reports having about 16% of residents age 65 or older living with Alzheimer's disease from our work, that those are often very under-reported statistics because it requires that someone has received a diagnosis, and a lot of people may not have that. But anyway, you've got relatively high rates of folks living with dementia, so thinking about ways to include those families and those individuals and offer, and ensure that the spaces in town are inclusive and respective of those folks. As well as there was some conversation, although Norwood is, I think, 95% white, there is a small and growing population of people who do have various language and cultural preferences, and that that can continue to be a challenge to try to outreach to those communities despite Keri's, the efforts of other musicians in town. So continuing to think about how Norwood can be an inclusive place. The other piece that I, related to the inclusive piece, is the issue of economic security. I think sometimes when we think about diversity, equity, inclusion, we, we forget that economic diversity is an important aspect of that as well. So thinking about the fees or the ticket prices of social opportunities, for example, or the fees associated with participating in rec, rec department programming and things like that, and offering seniors -- that those resources and the community partnerships are just trying to think about ways it can be accessible to people who may have limited needs. So we offer some ideas for some dementia-friendly practices that could be, that could be taken place in, in Norwood, as well as this idea of see someone, tell someone, a campaign to sort of encourage residents, again, to sort of take notice of someone in their community who may need some additional support. I think that's particularly important these days, just to kind of get the eyes and the ears of the community, thinking about older adults and then how they can be a center if, if they have some needs. So I know I went through that really fast, in part because I wanted to give at least a few minutes for some questions, and as I said, the report will go into further detail of, of all of that. So I'm going to try to stop sharing my screen if I can figure out how to do that. But in the meantime, does anyone have any questions?
All right. Well, thank you very much for that presentation, and I know Keri and her outreach department will be making sure that the Board and all the other aspects of our general government keep the matters in their forefront of their thoughts and all developments as we go forward. We are in a hurry tonight because we've got a late start, but if there's one or two questions, I certainly entertain those, but I don't want to prolong the question-answer period because we are running late. Any, Mr. Haddad?
Yeah, just quickly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the Board be getting a copy of either the presentation or the needs assessment report that you were consistently referencing throughout?
Did you hear that question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I did hear the question, and the answer is yes. We, we planned to, we wanted to sort of see, we got what feedback we got this evening, but we plan to have the report to Keri by the end of the week, and the slides are available now as well.
Okay. And my second question is, you talked about the need for a steering committee set up in, in town. How did you see that set up, or how would you envision it being set up?
Yeah, there's a number of ways to consider setting that up. I think the two things that I find in, in my experience that have been most helpful in, in terms of the success of those committees are, number one, including a mix of both, you know, sort of municipal staff, community stakeholder partners, and residents themselves. And so again, trying to get the, the mix right, I think, is important in terms of people's feeling like they can actually accomplish things, but also maintaining connections to the community and maintaining sort of the perspective of the residents. So I would suggest a mix of people, if possible. And the other, other aspect of the steering committee that I've seen be successful is the idea of having potentially like an executive board or executive membership that is potentially separate from sort of a leadership committee that actually, you know, sort of people who oversee and provide guidance and connections, and then there's people that sort of the worker bees and the people who really try to get these things implemented. And so to think about, maybe thinking about a structure like that could be helpful as well. And the other thing I'll just say, and I, I mentioned it briefly, and it was really the purpose of our document review, is that the age-friendly framework is very broad. All are doing planning around housing, transportation, outdoor spaces. You're doing planning like that already, and so to think about how those planning processes and those committees, the folks who are charged with implementing those plans, take aging into account, and maybe have, you know, representatives from the COA or the senior center on those processes will also be a very efficient way to, to continue reaching your age-friendly goals.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, we'll get that report and give it a little further closer review and stay in touch with Keri and see what we need to do next to help move this along. Thank you very much for the work and the presentation this evening. All right, with that, we'll --
Yes, thank you all. Thank you, Keri.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keri, did you have any, Keri, do you have anything you wanted to add? I don't want to leave you out.
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right.
I'm excited about the presentation, so thank you for letting us present it to you.
All right, thank you. So with that, we will move on. We do have a 7:30 with Chief William Brooks. Chief Brooks, are you with us?
I am, I'm with you virtually.
Welcome, welcome, chief. We have, we have your written report, and you have the floor.
Boy, I don't think I've actually done with you, you folks as a group since about February, when all this started, so let me, let me condense seven months into, in 10 minutes or so, and five minutes, and then I can answer some questions. So I've spoken publicly a little bit about it, and it's been covered a little bit, but the Department has continued to function even under the world of, the world of COVID. I must say, we've gotten great guidance from Segal Reese, and she's just worked awfully hard on behalf of the town, and specifically on behalf of, I think, the two public safety agencies, I think Chief Maurice would, would agree, just giving us guidance on the best way to, to navigate our way through all of this. You know, in policing, there's this policy, and then there's regulations, and there's general orders, and then something called special orders, which are specific orders to cover a specific event. And I might issue, you know, a special order once a year, and I, I think I've issued 11 since February, trying to, you know, give officers, dispatches, and support employees guidance on, on how it'd function. When this first broke, we stopped all roll calls, we sent a few administrative people to work remotely, like the rest of the world was doing, but of course, patrol officers can't do that. So they were out of the road and answering calls and on patrol like they'd normally be, but we changed the way we took crime reports. Now, if you were to report something like an identity fraud or theft, or the subject is no longer in the area, the dispatcher would probably take your number, and an officer would call you from his car. Sometimes when people walk in the station, the officer calls in, and we transfer the call to a lobby phone. So we appreciate the public's patience with all of that, but we've had to do that to try to keep our workforce safe. And we've taken, we've taken a lot of other steps, and, you know, mass and distancing, like so many other people have. But in the early stages of this, when I would look out my window and look across the street at Char's and CVS and see, you know, seven or eight cars in the lot, and everybody was home, our officers, of course, had to stay on the road. So it's a big, big change for us. I must say, now, this deep into it, and I almost hate to say this, but we've only had one employee infected. He did not get infected from work and, and did not bring it to work because of the strict protocols we had in place around testing and quarantining and that sort of thing. He's now all better, and he's back. But to do the kind of work that we do, and, you know, similar to the kind of work FIRE does, sometimes we're doing chest compressions on people, and to keep our workforce safe for this long, under these conditions, I'm just very pleased with that, I'm pleased with -- with that, I'm pleased with the way that members of the department have responded to the, to the guidance that we've given them. You're probably aware that we've had some retirements announced that are coming up. Deputy Chief Kelly will be wrapping up a 33-year career, and Officer Paul Murphy, who was our school resource officer at the high school, I want to say in the range of 35 years, will both be retiring in, in January. A process is underway with Mr. Mazuko to prepare for the, for the replacement of the deputy chief, and we have already made arrangements to replace, while I'd argue that Officer Murphy is irreplaceable, but at least to replace him in, in his position as a school resource officer, and I have assigned Officer Jeffrey Begoma, who for the last few months has been in training, but even in, in training has just done a marvelous job. He's been working awfully closely with our other school resource officer, Officer Jamie Mahoney. They've been working very closely together, and Officer Paul Murphy continues on the job and he will be until January, and the three of them really have made a spectacular team. Unfortunately, we've had a couple of deaths over the course of the last month or so. Officer Les LeBlanc, who had served many years with the department and was our photographer and evidence technician for a long time, passed away, and Lieutenant Joe Jampa just last night, who was 95 years old and had served 31 years with the department, retiring as the second-in-command in 1990, passed away. We've hired some new officers, and normally I would, would have brought them to a meeting, but we're just not able to do that. But Officers Ryan Sinclair, TJ George, and Matt Ivory have been hired and completed the academy last spring, have completed field training, and they are now out on their shift. We've also hired a couple of officers that I'm not going to name just yet because they haven't even entered the academy, but we have a couple of officers going to the academy on, on January 4th. We've had a couple of events circling back to the school resource officers and the work that they've been doing. I think you probably all saw on, on social media or in the press, the job that the school resource officers did, supported by theater students that know at high school, and supported by the school liaison officers, who as you know are the full-time patrol officers assigned as liaisons to the elementary schools. But they are, they, they put on a, they put on a program, night before Halloween, which involved a drive-through Halloween experience behind the high school, and they did a masterful job, in spite of sub-freezing temperatures and snow on the ground. They had kind of stations in place, they had folks in costume, both theater students and officers, and there was, there was a Grinch, and there were people masked up, and there were, there was a witch, there were all sorts of different folks, and you started at the beginning and you got, you got a bag of candy from Officer Hoyle and Officer Murphy, and then you made your way through the, through the drive-through. This week, the officers have been working, and again, because things have changed around here, the SROs have taken on, and these were all their ideas, by the way, but they took on a project of gathering gift cards from supermarkets that would be distributed to needy families. And yeah, just as of today, they have raised $4,000 in supermarket gift cards, which are then being distributed through the schools as a result of the work of the school resource officers and supported, by the way, by the, by the principals who also accept the donations of the schools. And they are already now planning a Christmas experience for kids who won't see the, maybe the Christmas experience the way that they normally would. Again, it's kind of on the, the idea of a, of a drive-through similar to what you saw with Halloween. I think it's going to involve asking people to drop gift cards in a box at the end, which we will then, offices with Santa Claus will distribute on Christmas, Christmas Eve Day, but it will be a Christmas experience for families, and I think also allow merchants to get in, on the act by making gift cards available, being able to sell them to the public. And it's in the very early stages, we've only been talking about this for a few days again, not my idea, but the idea of the school resource officers and coordinated by Lieutenant Patton who oversees them, and so we have something in store for families come, come Christmas week. This has been a, this has been an odd year and a different year, but I'm just thrilled that the members of my department have not only adapted to get through it, but have adapted to provide service in, in new ways and ways above and beyond what you'd expect in a police department. You know, I'll leave the rest of, rest of our time together for any questions that you might have, I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer them. Like I say, we've, we want to try to cover seven months of ground, but that's as best I can encapsulate what we've been doing lately.
Thank you, chief. You've had a, quite a tr- turnover, a lot of new officers in the last few years. Who's, who's currently wearing badge one?
I'm, I'm sorry, you know, I'm just, I'm just having, it's awfully muffled that I'm having trouble to...
Do you, do you know who is currently wearing badge one?
How are you wearing badge one?
Oh, thank you. I have some, some help here with understanding you. Officer Paul Murphy is currently wearing badge one.
Okay.
So there was a, there was a tradition in the department that a lot of people are familiar with, you know, back in the day when I first came here, every time somebody retired, your badge number changed. And honestly, with the department of 60 officers, that became somewhat of a nuisance, to be honest with you, like you'd come to work and somebody would have gone in your locker and a lieutenant would have taken your badge number. So, you know, when I, when I came here, we stopped that practice, and only the first few rotate badge numbers. So when Officer Bobby Baker retired, over a year ago, he gave up badge one. He'd been wearing badge one, and now Officer Paul Murphy is wearing badge one.
Thank you. Questions on the presentation or the written report? Mr. Maloney?
Just real quickly, chief, indeed, we have not had the chance to breathe the same air for a long time or even remotely, but I, we, we do know you guys are doing a great job in the department and in coping with this COVID business, so rest assured you have our support and our appreciation for everything that you and, and the same goes for everyone in the department. And a special thank you and best wishes to, to Deputy Chief Kelly. I think he, he's served the town very well all these years, and I know that, or I hope that all good things happen to him in the future. So thank you for his service, thank you for your presentation, good work.
Mr. Hajar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to thank Deputy Chief Kelly for the years that he's served. I've known him, and I, I know Mr. Maloney's known him for a long, long time, boys played hockey together. He's an outstanding individual. I, I wish him a lot of success going forward, and I'm sure he'll do very, very well. When I was reading through your report, chief, the first three paragraphs under Lieutenant Chris Flanagan's report, you know, disturbing about all the trafficking of narcotics, I'm, I'm glad they were caught. We're all over the place, Revere, Walpole, Norwood, so you're around, you're doing a great job, and while it's not good news to read, it's good news that we, you're getting some of this stuff off of the street. As I comment every month on the, the training, which I think is very important in the residents of Norwood, should feel comfortable in the number of hours that your folks are being trained and the number of different courses. There was over 12 different courses attended by over 38 of your personnel, where actually everyone in your department got trained, for a total of 932 training hours last month. That's, that's excellent, and almost 4,100 hours for the year. I think it's great, shows a lot of activity, involvement, in the, the courses that you're listing regarding mental health, pandemic, the health and wellness, all serve the community well and that you're staying on top of things. And finally, I just want to also wish Officer Paul Murphy much success and luck going forward. I've no, only known Paul for a few years, all through Impact Norwood, but he has done a great job with the students that he has been involved with. He's got the right temperament to deal with them. I've seen him in action, he does a great job, and he sticks up for how to handle them, how to deal with them, what we can do to improve the relationship, and he certainly has been a good representative of the police officers, all of them, to the residents and students of, of this town, and I really wish him well and obviously his incoming individual just as much success. So thank you, chief.
Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chief. In 1956, my father was elected to the Board of Selectmen. One of the first things that he did was to cause the first four Italian descent people to be appointed to the Norwood Board of Selectmen. Up until that time, the membership had been limited to people that were referred to as Yankee or Irish. So the first four people who were appointed were Joe Jampa, Vito DeCico, Nicolino DiStito, and Tom McKenzie. I've kept up with Joe Jampa over the years, he was the last one left, and right until the end, he was the type of man that he had been his whole life. He was a gentleman. He had tough service in World War II. All four of those people who were appointed had tough service, and, and Joe Jampa always was dignified and kind and, and loved the town of Norwood so much. I'm sorry to hear of his passing. Another funny thing in life, Paul, Peter Kelly, a lot of you should know that Peter Kelly, when he was in high school, he was a high school class president. He has been a leader his whole life, and good luck to Peter and the wonderful family that he has. I'm going to make myself sound very old because I can tell you folks that I remember the day that Paul Murphy was born. His family had such, his, his mother Regina and his father, Chief Murphy, they were such loving and kind people. They, they, they were so happy and they, you know, the whole news spread around town so fast that, that Paul was born. We have a picture of him standing like this with his hand like this. It's an adorable picture, but congratulations, Paul, you've earned the rest, and I hope that you have a very happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Lane?
Just very quickly, I just want to say thank you to Chief Brooks, and I appreciate his leadership, and I think it's a testament to that, that he's being asked to attend all of these virtual conferences and committees, and I think that's great, and, you know, I, one of maybe the only good things to come out of the pandemic would be the ability to attend more of these things and not have to travel, so, you know, I, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, chief, thank you very much for the report, appreciate it, and I promise it won't be another six months before we see you again.
Hopefully, hopefully it will be sooner. I just want to, you know, just, if I can just wrap up, and if you just give me just one more minute, you know, so I've mentioned the two retirements coming up. Deputy Chief Kelly, in addition to just spending, you know, 33 years here, has worked in every rank of the department, working his way up as a detective, as a sergeant, obviously starting as a patrol officer, but a detective, a sergeant, a lieutenant, and then our first deputy chief, and, you know, he headed up a program where all departments in Norfolk County, countywide, report their drug overdoses to a database, which was financially supported, is financially supported by District Attorney Morrissey, and though that database sends prompts to individual police agencies, the agency where the person lived when they overdosed, and prompts a follow-up by a police officer throughout the county, and he has, he has led that. He's, and he's done a great job with that. He has also overseen the computer crime lab that we, that we manage for the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council, so he'll be, he'll be sorely missed. Paul Murphy has been mentioned, you know, he gets mentioned for being a school resource officer and for wearing badge one, and I'm sure that Mrs. Donahue will appreciate this historic tidbit, but this will be the, with the exception of a six-month period in the 1970s, this will be the first time we have not had a Murphy on the Norwood Police Department in 80 years.
Wow.
Beginning with the appointment of James Murphy, who, as you know, became chief, he passed away in 1973. I rely on one of his sons, Brian, who served here as kind of our unofficial historian. Chief Murphy passed away in 1973, and a few months later, Billy Murphy was appointed to the department in 1974. But with the extent, with the exception of that short stretch, which I think was six months, there has always been a Murphy on the Norwood Police Department going back to 1940, to the appointment of, of Chief Murphy, so of 1941, I believe. So anyway, appoint, appoint in history for the department, and we will get through it, but both of these officers will be sorely missed. And it has been nice seeing you, if only virtually, and I'll see you all again soon. I'll yield the rest of my time to Chief Maurice, who is anxiously waiting to get on.
Thank you, chief. Chief Maurice, you're up, sir. Again, we do have your written report, and anything you'd like to address with us at this time? The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board. In the same situation as Chief Brooks was, it's been quite a while since we spoke in February, and a lot has gone on with the Norwood Fire Department, a lot of changes, a lot of new faces. And first of all, I'd like to start off with just giving my condolences to Mrs. Donahue. I want you to know, Mrs. Donahue, that, that your brother received the best of care from the Norwood Fire Department, and I've been thinking a lot of you and your sister Olga, so I just wanted to, to give you my condolences.
Thank you very much.
Since we've last spoken, we've had about five retirements from the Norwood Fire Department. Deputy Chief Ron Maggio, many of you know him, he was almost a 40-year veteran of the department, excellent firefighter, worked his way up through the ranks and did a great job as deputy chief. Captain Mark Boylan, another quality individual, did a great job, worked his way up through the ranks to captain, could not find a better shift commander in the department, ran his crew with great skill and efficiency, and was a top-notch fighter commander. Firefighter Steve Lyden and firefighter Billy LeBlanc, both would be missed, and Fire Department Mike Waters, as many of you know, was a one-of-a-kind individual, and we wish him, all of them, the, the best of luck in their retirement. With the retirements, we also had multiple promotions within the department, and hopefully next time we meet, I can bring some of those individuals with me. Lieutenant John Cody was promoted to the rank of deputy chief. I know many of you know him, he's been doing an outstanding job. Lieutenant Chris Quealy moved up from firefighter, he's our fire prevention lieutenant, he's also doing an excellent job. Lieutenant Jeff Campilioh got promoted to captain, and firefighter Scott St. Seer was promoted to lieutenant. Along with the promotions, we've also hired another, a number of individuals, three recently, Timothy Raftery, Jamal Provide Jackson, and Andrew Doherty have all joined the, the department and in fact started the 10-week academy this past Monday. We also had four other individuals who have been with the department, but because of the COVID pandemic, we had to delay the academy for them. Brian Betancourt, CJ Katuskas, Adam Carriga, and Ryan Greeley all completed their academy training and are now on both the apparatus and the ambulances. Last individual that we've hired is Shane McBride. He is our new department mechanic, he's doing a fantastic job. It's been a long time since the apparatus have, we see the attention they really deserved, and Shane is doing that currently. He's working with Deputy Chief Cody and going through all of our apparatus and ambulances, basically to, to see what condition they're in and what type of maintenance they're going to require to get them in tip-top condition. So with that, we also have interviews coming up on December 2nd for three positions. We had a number of candidates come in and sign the list, so we've been working with human resources, Kelly Spencer, and we'll be conducting those interviews in the community room in the beginning of December. I'd like to just talk about what the Norwood Fire Department has faced, been faced with over the, the past number of months, and I'm going to break it down into basically three sections, but all three come back to the members of the department and just the dedication that they have to their job and the people of the town. So first, I'll just talk about the pandemic. We know that it's been going on for quite a while now, but a little different perspective for Norwood Fire because we run the emergency medical services for the town. To have our members go out basically into the unknown at the beginning of the pandemic, not really knowing what we were dealing with, with the virus, really, it took a lot of dedication and courage for them to go out and do that. You may remember I broke the department up into three stations, we moved many of the members to, to... We moved many of the members to satellite stations. The reason myself and the command staff decided to do that was to basically limit our exposure to the virus and try to keep our members healthy and their family members safe. It actually worked very well. We were fortunate, we didn't have any members with a positive COVID result. And we continue that way today, and we hope that that continues. When we moved into the satellite stations, it was quite a logistical effort compared to something else I'm going to be talking about soon. But I'd like to thank the other departments that were very generous in helping us and accommodating us as we tried to keep the department whole so we could continue providing services to the people of town. I'd like to thank Travis Farley from the Rec Department, I'd like to thank Jimmy Collins from the Light Department, and MacRyan from the DPW, both for the use of their buildings and for our members to be corded and also to house our apparatus so we could respond to everything. I'd also like to give a quick shout out to Kevin Shaughnessy and Dan Morrissey from the Light Department. They were a huge help in basically lining up telephones and ways of communicating between the department and the satellite stations. We could not have done it without them, so I'd like to mention them. And also, Chief Brooks had mentioned members of our Health Department. I cannot say enough about Sagal Reese and Stacy Lane, the information that they provided to us in public safety, keeping us informed, keeping us educated so we could remain healthy and keep providing these services. The town really has gems in their Health Department, and I want to thank them for everything that they've done for the Fire Department. Just a few quick things that many people may know, may not know, that during the pandemic, it was difficult to obtain PPE. I want to thank all the local businesses that actually started making their own PPE and provided that to us. With that, we were actually able to provide other agencies within town, including the hospital and the nursing homes, who were having difficulty obtaining PPE, things like hand sanitizer, face shields. Anytime that we were able to obtain N95 masks, we always kept some for ourselves, but we would also give out some to any other health agencies so we could, you know, make sure that they were able to provide the services that they needed to provide. And then just getting back to it, the members of the department, again, day in and day out, they would go out in the fire trucks and the ambulances and basically face that virus. And I'm just extremely proud of the members and what they went through, and we continue to go through today as we start to see the virus ramp up again. We're a little more educated, I think we understand things more, we're definitely well more protected better. And so that was basically the first big incident that we had. And then there was June 28th. I'm sure everyone will not forget the rainstorm that we had in the town. I actually call it, it was a biblical flood. I'm not sure if we can keep it that way, but I want to thank Captain Dan Hawkins, Dispatch of Carlene de Blasey in Group Two, who bore the initial grunt of that storm. Everyone remembers, of course, what happened with the hospital, but that was only one part of what was going on during that incident or that rainstorm. We had multiple alarms, multiple people calling for ambulances, flooding, all different types of issues, and just the professionalism that Captain Hawkins and his crew used in dealing with that. I thank them for the job that they did. But then, of course, we have the hospital. Logistically, most likely the greatest thing that I'll ever go through in my career, I would never have dreamed that we would have something like having to evacuate Norwood Hospital. We ended up having to call two ambulance task forces, technical rescue team to provide lighting throughout the incident, second alarm for manpower. We had over 50 agencies respond. We had fire departments from many parts of the east of Massachusetts lend us their help. We had great help from Chief Brooks and our friends in law enforcement. And basically, what it came down to was it was manpower was what was needed once we knew we had to evacuate the hospital. Technically, it was difficult when we had individuals in the ICU and some of the higher level care units, which fortunately our paramedics and EMTs were able to accommodate. And then everyone else, it was basically grunt work and carrying people downstairs, stairwells that were flooded out, down through the emergency room and out to waiting ambulances. Excellent job done by the command staff, Deputy Chief Hayes, Deputy Chief Cody, other officers from other departments that were tasked with managing staging areas or ambulance task forces. So basically, it was a huge, huge incident. The most important thing is that every one of those patients were transported to another facility, medical facility, and not one individual was hurt in that transport. Not one patient and not one member of any department that assisted that day and evening in evacuating all of those patients. So very successful, challenging, but very successful. And last, I just would like to finish up, and then you'd be able to ask me any questions, is back in October, we had a small fire at the Nova Commerce Center. And after going through the buildings, after extinguishing the fire, which it was a small fire, and the firefighters did a great job putting it out quickly, but we also quickly realized that there were conditions in that facility or building that were not up to code, very extremely dangerous, not only for the people that were working there, but for any respondents who might have to respond to another incident. The decision was made with the command staff of the Fire Department and the Building Department that this was not acceptable. I feel very badly for the businesses that have been put out, but it comes down to life safety, and that is the role of the Fire Department. That's our number one goal at the Fire Department, is to preserve life. And just with the situation we found there, it was not acceptable, and we had to take steps to mitigate or eliminate that, hopefully temporarily. Unfortunately, after having a cease and desist order from the Building Department, for the main building down at the Commerce Center, we had another incident where a gentleman fell down an elevator shaft. Excellent work done by the crews to use technical rescue techniques to evacuate that or get that individual out of the elevator shaft and then transport it to a hospital. But after going through that building and realized, which was an outlined building, not the main one, realizing that we also had many issues in that building, and it came to the realization that we have a major problem throughout the whole complex. So a lot of work has been done. The Department of Fire Services has been involved, the Fire Marshal's Office, our department and the Building Department, and we've been working very hard to do everything we can to basically make the place safe currently, which is a cease and desist order, and then hope for the future for the complex. So those are three extraordinary events. The first two were different in the sense that it was really the on-the-ground firefighters, EMTs, paramedics that were dealing with those situations. And just the fantastic job, the dedication that they had in completing, getting us through those, my hat is off to all the members of the department. And then the last one is basically our fire protection services within the department and the job that the deputy chiefs and the fire provincial lieutenant are doing to basically take this on their shoulders with the Building Department, to make sure that we keep people safe and don't get them into situations that they shouldn't be in. So basically, it all comes down to the members. I'm very proud of them, I'm very happy with the job that they've done over the past half a year, and will always be there, providing this to the people of Norwood. And with that, I'd like to open this up to any questions.
Thank you, Chief. I think I speak for the whole board when I say we're very appreciative of all the hard work and dedication all the members of the department have gone through these several months and all those incidents that you just reviewed for us. However, we do want to try to get us to move along quickly. We're already 10 minutes behind for a public hearing. Any questions that need to come up at this time? Mr. Jar?
Just a couple if I can, Mr. Chairman, I'll do it quickly. Chief, just really, you have two really, really good, I hate to use the word great, but in this case, I'll just use very good at this point, deputies and John Cody and Dave Hayes. It's a testament to your leadership and Tony's leadership in selecting individuals who can do the kinds of things that need to get done in your department. So congrats. I know you've had a very busy four months in this fiscal year, your permit numbers are way up, which I guess is good, but shows the vibrancy of the town. Chief, you talked about the 6/28 storm and the response that you had to do for the hospital. Did your department ever take a look back and say, okay, what did we learn from it? Is there something that we could improve upon, or we were lacking this, or whether it's fiscal or key context that you said, geez, I wish we had this number? And you're doing some write-up of things that you learned that you can implement to be better prepared? God forbid if something like that ever comes again.
Yes, we have, Mr. Hajar. Basically, what is called an after-action report, we're not complete with it. The deputy chiefs and myself met with the officers who were involved with the incident that day from the department, and we had gone over any types of problems that happened during the incident or any things that went well with the incident. And then we're actually scheduling to meet with the group, Group Two, who had the incident. Unfortunately, it's not happened as quickly as I would have liked to do the after-action report. I know with the Lawrence gas explosion, it was, I think, well over half a year before they even came out with their after-action report. So we're working on it. Unfortunately, as time has gone by, we've just gotten busier with more types of incidents. So thankfully, I have a second deputy chief to help handle all the work that we're doing, but we are working on it and hopefully we will have it out in the next few months.
Okay. And last one is Engine Two. From beginning to end of Mr. McBride's report, often mentioned repairs, 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 repairs. We know it was out for a long period of time previous to his arrival, so is Engine Two going to survive the short term? Or are we in for an issue regarding a replacement or whatever? Because it's listed many, many times in his report.
Yes, Engine Two is in rough shape. And what's been done with the engine is, I guess, with terms somewhat superficial. Once we get the tools that we receive the money for from town meeting, we'll be able to do a much more in-depth assessment of the engine itself. Currently, we do not favor Engine Two or Engine Three. We're running different pieces of apparatus. We have a brand-new engine as our lead engine, and then Engine Four is our second new engine. But anytime those trucks have to come out of service, we've been using Squad Two, which is a vehicle that has not seen much use, just because we're not 100% confident in Engine Two or Engine Three at this time, that we're not going to see problems if we start to use them for a week or two at a time. So until the mechanic can do a thorough, thorough assessment, we're just trying to keep them in the background.
Thank you. Anything further? Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chief. Chief, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of my whole family. Thank you very much to you and the whole department for all of your help. We appreciate it very, very much.
Thanks, Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you, Chief. And as with Chief Brooks, we won't be so long before we see you again. Appreciate the report.
Thank you.
With that, we do have a public hearing that we're late for. I apologize. We did have some important information that Chief wanted to deliver to the public, and we'll get right into that appointment. I see that Attorney Hearn and his client, Mr. Desmond, are present. So, Mr. Hearn, this afternoon, we did receive an updated written statement for us to review. And would you like to take the floor at this point?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, and thank you, and good evening to the members of the board. I did send you a letter last week, I think that was delivered to you, it was party of packets, and that responded, I believe, to some of the questions that were raised when we were before you, two weeks ago, having to do with parking and capacity. And I think I had also written to the building inspector, and we had a discussion with him and with the town planner, and I believe that Mr. Walsh has written to you also. And then this afternoon, I forwarded a memo that I thought would be useful to summarize some of the information that we have tried to or want to convey to the board in considering the application. So I do believe that the questions about parking have been resolved satisfactorily. I hope the selectmen that had raised those questions may feel that way also. I know that, you know, as projects are developed at Norwood Space Center, there will likely be a need to reevaluate, depending upon the different activities, whether there's sufficient parking. As I pointed out, we have the ability at that location to add approximately 70 new spaces, and if it comes to that, they can be added. Mr. Alkeodas commented in our discussion with him last week that he doesn't want us building those unless we need them, because we also want to preserve as much impervious, I'm sorry, pervious surface at the site for drainage and everything. So we also, as I said, resolved the occupancy issue. I put in my memo today a reference to the occupancy level of 160 persons, and I think we had originally put 200 in our application. We would ask that that be considered 160 for the purpose of the present application for the all-alcohol license. And also, there is an application for entertainment licenses before you receive. As to the hours of operation, I wanted to clarify, while we've asked for the license for the broad hours that are typically allowed for this type of license, my client has told me to, asked me to relay to you that his intention is that the service of alcohol will only take place when there are events going on at the site, and that would normally be between, starting at, say, 6 o'clock in the evening. And we certainly don't mind any limitation on the license that would reflect that. This is not a bar that we're proposing to put at this location or anything like that. This is a performance venue that would be presenting different types of music. As I stated in the memo, jazz, Dixieland, rock and roll, acoustic music, the occasional comedy show. And the people that this is likely to appeal to and the people who are likely to attend are people probably in their 30s, mid to late 30s, up through their 60s, and perhaps beyond that. It's a crowd that isn't likely to create problems on the site or anywhere in the neighborhood. And I think responding to a question or referring to a question, I think Mr. Lane asked before you, we told him last time, wouldn't we serve alcohol if we had an event involving children? But it's not likely that we would be having performances that adhere to children at the program. This is for adults, and that's the plan. But I hope the memorandum I submitted today helps to summarize some of this information. We're happy to answer any questions that the board may have regarding the alcohol license. And also, with respect to the entertainment license, that's a pretty short application, and I think you have that before you. And frankly, I think my comments over the last few minutes probably respond to that question also. But again, we're happy to take any questions or try to clarify anything that might be on anybody's mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to reference- I just wanted to reference, but you beat me to the matter, that you also have before us the request for an entertainment license. While the entertainment license doesn't strictly require public hearing, this board typically does like to have the applicants in and the butters, anyone who might be interested, and basically hold it as a public hearing. So I think tonight will serve the purpose for that. Allow discussion, because I think they kind of go hand-in-hand while we're having the discussion period on both matters. But we'll clearly take any action or votes regarding those matters separately at the end, because they also have the potential of standing alone. Mrs. Dunne?
Thank you, Mr. Chia. I don't know which chairman could address the question, but Attorney Hearn. Would you please be kind enough to clarify a few questions? On your original application, it says total square footage, 2,570 square feet. And on the plan that you submitted that had to do with the parking, Building Five, it says 20,751 square feet. So what is the actual square footage of the premises?
The actual square footage of the premises that Mr. Desmond has leased is the smaller number, 2,570, I think you mentioned. This is Unit 5A, which is a portion of Building Five. Building Five is much larger, has other activities going on. And Mr. Desmond has only leased a portion of the building.
Thank you.
As part of this.
Thank you. My next question has to do with the capacity. On the original application, the occupancy number was listed as 200. And on your subsequent submission, as recently as today, and earlier in the testimony, you indicated that it would be 160 people. My question has to do with, and then on the original application, it said seating capacity 82. So number one, 160 people is correct?
That's correct.
And does that mean standing capacity or seating capacity?
Mr. Desmond, I think, can answer that better than I. Many times, there would be people standing rather than seated at this type. But Mr. Desmond, if he can sign on his microphone, and there he is, he might be able to answer that better.
What was the question? I could barely hear Helen.
Oh, thank you.
The question Mrs. Dunne had was, we've mentioned a seating capacity of 82 people, a total capacity of 160. And you can explain the difference. To what circumstances would you have 82 people seated? And what circumstance would you have 160 people in the space?
Are we talking about events, certain events? Like if we had like a solo sitting, or we would be having a sit-down with small tables and 82 people? We laid it out and that's, you know, with plenty of space for the fire egresses and everything. It was 82 chairs and half a dozen tables. The 160 would be for standing room.
Thank you.
So it would be a different event. You know, one event could be a standing only and the other event, other events would be just proceeding.
Thank you. My next question is, from the Town of Norwood zoning bylaw, schedule of minimum, Section 6.1.3, has to do with the schedule of minimum requirements for parking. When you determine the amount of parking spaces necessary for the use of the premises, which category under Section 6.1.3 did you use?
Mrs. Dunne, we did a calculation that provided for the greatest number of spaces. And it had to do with, I don't have that page in front of me of the bylaw. I'm sorry, I didn't bring it with me this evening. But there were two calculations that we did. One produced 54 spaces required, the other produced 57 spaces required. We reviewed it with Mr. Halkeotis and Mr. Walsh, and they agreed that we fit, that our calculations were correct for what we were proposing for the site, for the space involved and the number of people. And that was, they gave it their blessing. As far as the exact calculation, how I did it, give me a moment, I'll look and see if I have it in my notes. But I did not bring the bylaw home with me this evening. I'm working from home this evening.
Thank you. Probably it's under Section B, 6.1.3.
I think I can help you here, Mrs. Dunne. I think I can. I had some notes regarding commercial recreation in doors. And that would require, we calculated 115 people as workers. And that would require rounding up to eight spaces, 145 patrons. So the total is 160 people there. 145 patrons rounds up to 49 parking spaces. So that's how we got 39 plus 8 equals 57 spaces that we've determined and the building inspector and the town planner have agreed would be appropriate for that space.
If you refer to Section B of 6.1.3, places of public assembly, one parking space for each three persons' capacity based on the Massachusetts State Building Code. The other one that you just may have referred to would be Section I, commercial recreation. One parking space per two persons' participant capacity plus one space per three persons' spectator capacity. So this brings me to my next question. If you go to the plan, you submitted two plans in regard to parking. And one of them shows the number of parking spaces, which you've indicated, for the entire premises, existing parking spaces consisting of 216 spaces. If you go to the section, the second plan, you see Building 12, 10, Building 8, Building 6, Building 4, Building 2, and Building 5, and Building 1. Those parking spaces, the 216 existing parking spaces, are supposed to satisfy all of the uses for the premises, for the entire parcel. Do you have a breakdown on the number of spaces that are required for each of the other buildings, as there are six other buildings that are using the same 216 spaces?
I don't have an exact breakdown on that. We have, as the buildings have been occupied and as different tenants have come and gone, we have dealt with the building department and the town planner. We've also dealt with the zoning board, the planning board, along the way, obtained their approvals. And the spaces have been deemed to be appropriate for the occupation that's presently there. Now, if we were to, if the uses expanded, I expect we'd have to come back and satisfy the building inspector and possibly go to the zoning board or the planning board, depending upon what was, what the matter was. And we might have to take that up, and it might limit what we can do going forward. But as of now, including Mr. Desmond's space, it's our understanding that we have sufficient space for what we plan to do and the occupancy that Mr. Desmond has calculated and worked out with Mr. Walsh and the building department. So we have, I think, plenty of parking. There have been much larger events in the past at that location, and I think there haven't been parking problems at all. We're very fortunate with the number of spaces we have and the uses that have been made. But we do recognize that going forward, as the Space Center is further redeveloped, there may be a situation where we run into a problem. We're not there now, and we, anybody, any future uses might require establishing to the satisfaction of the building commissioner as the zoning enforcement officer, that we have sufficient space. And if we don't, we'll have to deal with the zoning board and the planning board or change our plans. But for Mr. Desmond, we have enough.
Counsel Hearn.
That's what's before us.
Mrs. Dunne? I just had a comment. We had a letter, I don't have a copy of it in front of me, I don't know why, I must have misplaced it, from Commissioner, Building Commissioner Walsh, who did a calculation and satisfied with their numbers. And to your question, I did have a discussion with him, and he did indicate that he met and discussed with Mr. Dupree, from the Space Center, what the other uses and potential uses even that they know might be coming down the road at this time, and took all those matters into his calculations and consideration.
I saw that, but I'm not relying on that. That came down, I got a copy of that tonight. But in regard to the building department, I have a question there. At the last hearing, you indicated, your client indicated that the client had spent approximately $100,000 renovating the premises. Is that true?
I believe that's the number, Mrs. Dunne.
Yes, thank you. So what building permits does he have for that?
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Building permits?
What building permits does he have for that amount of expenditure?
I'll let, Mr. Desmond and Mr. Walsh have had discussions about the building permits. There were building permits pulled previously with Mr., when Mr. Shubert was the building inspector. And those have been operating, they've been operating under those. The subcontractors have been operating under the wiring and plumbing permits. Mr. Desmond has had a conversation more recently with Mr. Walsh about the permits. And I'll let Mr. Desmond answer that in greater detail than I can. Desmond?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, we, all the subcontractors pulled permits. The fire alarm systems all been redone. And as far as I know, that's been checked off by the fire department, according to Rami Electric. The plumbers, which are, they're on their final phase, they got their permit for their work, and then they got checked off by the plumbing inspector for the roughs. And they're finishing up probably by the end of next week, the finish work, and then they'll have to get another sign-off from the plumbing inspector on that. We had $5,000 worth of engineering work done by, I think, a Mr. Logan or Rogan, that had been signed off on. Some of the work that's in there, when I mentioned the amount of money that I spent in there, it was for lighting and things that we bought for the room. That was a large amount as well. You know, the lights, the lighting racks, sound system, that was all very expensive. That's part of it. But that didn't require permits.
So.
That was just equipment. We needed a five.
Thank you. In that regard.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. In that regard, the only two permits that I found on the record as regard to the building were one signed permit for $15 and $2,000, for a signed, $15 signed permit. And the other permit was a permit for, in December of 19, to December 19, for $5,000 worth of construction in regard to the installation of some beams. So, some beams. And that was 150, it said that $5,000 value to the project and $155 for the fee. My final comment, thank you, Mr. Chia. I have one more comment. I appreciate you letting me raise these issues that I find very, very important. On Attorney Hearn's letter dated November 19th, on page two, Attorney Hearn makes reference that he had a conference with building inspector Mark Walsh, town planner Paul Halkeotis, and assistant town planner Patrick Duchesne in regard to the questions, and that they were satisfied about the parking and so forth. So before, like, the town planner and the assistant town planner don't have the legal jurisdiction to make determinations about whether they like it or not. The whole power here lies with the building inspector and whether or not the project complies with the Town of Norwood zoning bylaws and the Massachusetts Building Code. I was very unhappy when we changed the system recently that took away the power of the planning board to be the hearing of what counts in a neighborhood. This whole project has been brought forth without one public hearing of human beings in a room. This has all been done either on Zoom or with people that aren't elected to represent the people of the Town of Norwood, where there's been no input about the history of the activity in South Norwood, the 40 years of removing places from South Norwood and cleaning up the whole place. And I just, I'm just very unhappy with this whole project. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Mr. Hajar?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Hearn, for the follow-up letters. I appreciate what you have submitted. From my view, the questions about parking for the Magic Room have been satisfied. I guess my focus will be in the future at some planning board meeting when we have to talk about parking, because if you look at, if you add up the square footage of all the buildings, we take away Building One, which has been sold off, and we have Buildings Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, Eight, Ten, and Twelve, that's 186,842 square feet. We're talking 2,570 feet. That's 1.4% of the entire square footage, taking up 26% of the parking. So it does matter what time things go on in there and how he's going to fill this up. But I said, I think we can't ignore the fact that today, and that's all that we can ask the building department to look at, is they may have satisfied the requirement of parking, but I think we do have some work going forward. I probably spent more time than I really should down at that site looking at what's going on. I appreciate everything that Mr. Dupree has done to those buildings. It was an old building that he has put money into, that I think has raised hopes that we have a great site that has a lot of potential development. I think all of our concerns are just making sure that it's being done in that way. By the way, Mr. Hearn, all the handicap parking, except for one space, is down the Moore Street end of that lot. There's only one spot, and that's in the middle. There are no handicap spots at the other end where most of the parking is going to be for the Magic Room. And I did, November 21st, I visited the site. It was a nice day, went there at 4:15 PM. Percival's was open, they had a lot of people inside and outside. It was a great day. And I said, there was a good crowd, both in and out. And I counted the available parking spaces, there were 120. I went back later on at 6:30, knowing that, you know, as time goes on, those people are going to leave, other events come into other parts of the building, and there were 146 available spots. So there is ample parking for the Magic Room. I don't think that that is the concern today, but it definitely is going to be a concern as we move forward. We all want to be successful, but we just don't want to jam up the intersection right at Moore Street. It'll be tough. So I'm okay with the parking answer, but yeah, the devil's in the details for future plans for that site, which hopefully will meet the needs of the community as well as the town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Hearn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Hearn and Mr. Desmond. I think you've done a good job tonight of answering some of the questions that were raised a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Hearn especially on the parking matter, the promise about event-related hours, because this facility will be a project, I mean, an event facility. It's not a barroom, it's not a restaurant, it's not a saloon, it's an event-based facility. And we've had great success with another one in this town in the past three years, down on Endicott Street. We call it the Fallout Shelter. They closed now for reasons that they had nothing to do with. But we do know the kind of facility you'll have down there. you'll have down there. I'm sure it's going to succeed. Moreover, I, I agree with, I'm glad my, my colleague, Mr. Hajar, brought this up. It's, the Magic Room, I think, I hope, I'm confident it will prove to be a contributory element in a greater synergy down at the Space Center. They do have down there right now, under Mr. Dupree's leadership, they've developed a pretty eclectic mix of businesses down at the Space Center. Percival Brewing, who, Brewing is, which is well-known to us. Little Bird Events has succeeded down there. Craig Robertson's CrossFit Prosperity is one of the top fitness facilities in the area as well, and is, and along with a whole bunch of artists who are on the inside of the, of the larger building, and I think a new tenant going in at that front 15,000 square feet. So, not to belabor the point, but it's, it's a, this is a, this is a terrific project for the, for the neighborhood and for the town. I'm very pleased with the way it's turned out thus far. I do think the Magic Room will be a part of that success and a, and a contributor to, to its, its greater synergy. I look forward to your being down there, Mr. Desmond, and I, I appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hearn, Mr. Desmond, I have a couple of questions, and I think they probably go to both the request for entertainment license as well as your alcohol license application. Can you explain to me the operation that was referenced, the Fallout Shelter or Grassroots? They're closed now because of some problems in their building, but also they were closed previous to that because of COVID. When might you possibly be, expect to be operating? And would you operate at, I'm not even sure what the governor's orders are right now. Can you operate at a smaller number, or are you closed entirely by the COVID rules?
I think right, for the time being, I, I don't believe performance venues are, are open. So, with, at the moment, I don't think we can open. Mr. Desmond might have more information on that, but if he wants to chime in on it. Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know. Des, am I stating it correctly as you are understanding?
I, I didn't hear his question. I'm sorry. I just asked my wife to help me figure it out and turn it up here. It's really...
Mr. Plasko asked Des about whether the current restrictions by the governor or by the state are preventing the opening. Would they prevent the opening of the performance space under the present rules? Can you open up?
Yes. As, as it would any restaurant or any venue right now. There's, we're all watching what the governor's going to say. As of right now, I don't believe anybody can open.
I think that's the case.
All right. So, can you, can you explain to me a little better what your operation
is about? You're talking about being open till, and asking to be able to serve alcohol till 1 o'clock in the morning. What's going to be, and you're not a bar or a restaurant as you keep saying, only during the event. What kind of event is going on at 1 o'clock that you need to be serving alcohol?
Well, it'd be all kinds of different.
I don't necessarily understand your performance business, so I'm just asking for some further explanation so I know what you're up to down there.
When I hear this word "bar," it's, it's not a bar. It's a performance space. And to be competitive, obviously, we have to serve some, something to, to our patrons. But it's, you know, we're not going to be like shoveling alcohol to people at all hours of the night. You know, most of the, most of the time, we'll be, be over by, by one. And we have to clean up and everything else, so you've got to have some time. I, I'm not really sure what to say, except that, you know, if we don't have a, if we don't have a, a license, we can't be competitive. I mean, it's more of a theater than anything. A small living room performance space, which is all the rage these days. Well, it was until COVID. But it, you know, it's going to come back, and we're holding on. And in the meantime, we're whittling at putting the place together, working with the inspectors, inspectors like Matt Walsh. I worked with Mark Schubert prior to that. And the owner of the property, they've been giving us some leeways, you know, because of the COVID situation, because they really think it's going to be a bright start, not just for the complex, but for Norwood itself. I mean, we'd be very proud of it.
Des, if I can interrupt for a moment, though, I might have heard the question a little bit better than you did. Mr., I think Mr. Plasko was asking, if, if we're asking for a license till 1 o'clock in, in the morning, what, you know, how do, when do these concerts and performances normally end? And so, at what time do they normally end so that the board might have a better understanding of why we need the late hours?
Okay, well, they usually start around 8:00 and can go as long as till midnight. And we need an hour to break down, clean up, and lock down, secure the facility. I, I mean, it's...
All right, so...
That's, that's the program.
So, you wouldn't necessarily...
I mean, some of the, much earlier.
So, you wouldn't necessarily need the...
You know, they could end at 10 o'clock.
So, you wouldn't necessarily need the liquor license till 1 o'clock. You wouldn't be intending on serving. If we put a, for example, if we put an hour of midnight, as you mentioned, or 11 o'clock, that's when you have to stop serving alcohol. Doesn't mean you have to be off the premises. With the liquor license, there is a, a limit. What is it, 2 o'clock? 2 o'clock in the morning, and only, only your management staff and so forth can be there and help to clean up and things. You can't have any patrons on the premises. But you don't need the liquor license till 1 o'clock if you're closing at 11 or 12, and not intending to be serving alcohol after those performances are bended.
Well, I think that's a good point, Mr. Chairman, that if, if the concerts and performances are over by midnight, the patrons, the, the cleanup time follows that. And I suppose we could, if we served until midnight, and the event ended and the patrons left, the, the staff would be doing the cleanup, which might go a little bit longer. I, I think that's what you're suggesting, Mr. Chairman?
Basically, yes. Do I have another question? Anyone else? Mrs., Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To your point about closing time versus stopping serving alcohol, with the, the Fallout Shelter that Mr. Maloney mentioned, are there any restrictions for them in terms of time?
Well, yeah, there's, there's an hour on their license. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
All, all the licenses have a time limit on them. Mr. Maloney?
I, I just, just, the interesting thing about the Fallout Shelter was, they never go beyond 9 o'clock anyway. They never plan to. They, all their shows sort of start at 6:00 and go to 9:00. But the, the earliest I think you can put on these is 11:00 p.m., and the latest is 2:00 a.m. So, if you want to, you, you can attach a time to a, a closing time to a license. It's got to be...
Yeah, they have, you're right. They have up to 11:00 as a matter of right, once they have a license. It's our discretion between 11:00 and 2:00, and they, no one can give up permission after, between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Desmond, on your application, it said that your corporation has been in existence since 1987?
That's correct.
Thank you. Since 1987, in your business, have you held any liquor license before?
He has not held a liquor license before. He's had experience, and his family members who would be working in this enterprise have all had experience working at different types of liquor-serving establishments.
So, some of those...
They all picked certified.
Some of the establishments, they have included that place in, in Cambridge, the Middle East?
I, I did not hear that. I'm sorry, Mrs. Donahue.
What, what would be the, some, it's been indicated that in the past, some of the experience has a family member worked in a place in Cambridge called the Middle East. What are the hours of operation there?
I can answer that if you'd like.
Please.
I do, yeah. 2:00. Most of the, most of the, you know, the, the acts, they usually end by 1:00, so it's, you know, stopping at, serving at midnight is, is really, you know, ties our hands.
So, for, thank you.
The Middle East would be 2:00. They would stop serving at 1:30.
Right. So, for the record, we have a beautiful, beautiful operation going at the Space Center now. Each business there is an excellent asset to the Town of Norwood. I'm so happy. You go down the street there in the afternoon, you see families, kids outside playing, families sitting together. It's a very, very beautiful operation we have going there now, and it's helped South Norwood so much. Thank you, Mr. Dupree, for that. So far, we're doing great.
Thank you. Mrs. Melville, I, I don't have a copy of the, I know it came out last, or at our last meeting, and I didn't continue to bring it with me. The, the entertainment license?
We didn't have it.
We didn't have it? No. We never, we have not had it. Do you have a copy of?
I have it in front of me, Mr. Chairman, if it helps.
Yeah, I just wanted to see what it says. Okay, there's no hours of operation indicated on this. There isn't a specific question either, but it wasn't volunteered, so you, you would want that license till at least midnight?
Well, as Mr. Desmond says, sometimes the shows can go a little beyond midnight, and we wouldn't want to be violating the, the terms of any license. That, that's what we'd like, but 1:00 is still, you know, is, is preference, but I, I don't want it to rise or fall on that, if, if that is a big concern for the board. And if the board saw fit to grant the license, and limited it at 12:00, if we ran into a problem, maybe we'd come back and ask for extra hours. But beyond, beyond 12:00, as some other places have. This is, I understand the concerns, and the, the performance venue, some shows would go late, some shows would not. We would stop serving when the show ends, and allow time for people to leave the, the site, and, and then cleanup. But Mr. Desmond's preference is to go beyond midnight, because there are some shows that go beyond midnight. If the board won't do it, at, at, if that, if that is a, a, sort of a sine qua non, then we would say to the board's wishes, if, if midnight is the time you're talking about. If that's, if that's a concern, then we would, we'd, we'd go along with that. But I think that it, it wouldn't be the preference, and maybe we'd ask the board to, to revisit it. And so, I'd leave it, you, we understand, you understand our position, and I guess you're the ones who do the voting.
All right. So, just for the record, I think we ended up not having copies of this in our packet, so the applicant is asking for seven days a week, Sunday through Saturday. They're asking for music, instrumental, vocal of all varieties. They will have sound amplification involved, dancing by patrons, light show, stage lights, audio, visual show, video projection, and potential comedy act as well. And that's what the license is for.
That's correct.
Any other questions by board members? If not, is there any member of the public attending that would like to address this matter?
Just a quick question.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Sure. This is Valentina Akio, owner of Geron Kebab House in Norwood. A quick question. What, I, I've just heard those dates, 1997. You've been in business since 1997, is that right?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Desmond's company, he started in 1987. The, the corporation is rehearsal services Inc. I think it was 1987 that he started the company.
And was it always in that same location on Moore Street?
No.
Or am I all confused?
It has not been a different location. It's a, it's an ongoing business that has various locations, Mr. Chairman, but the, the request here is for a particular operation that would be called the Magic Room under the umbrella of the corporation, that would be operating a performance venue, performing arts center of sorts, in the, at, at the Unit 5A at 83 West Street.
Okay. What's in that space right now? Is it empty vacant space, or what, what's, is it a restaurant there? Is it a nightclub? What's in there right now?
Mr. Chairman, it's neither a restaurant, nor a nightclub, nor a boutique. Mr. Desmond is in the process of renovating it for use for the intended performing, performing arts, performance center, or performance venue. That, that's what he's been doing and previously, as, as I think many in the board already know, this was, this is part of the Norwood Space Center, which is a major redevelopment of what had been a very decrepit former industrial site. And Mr. Dupree and his group have been working for several years to bring it back and to breathe life into it, into the neighborhood. And Mr. Desmond is part of that breathing of life into the, into the Norwood Space Center. So, it is not a restaurant. It has never been a restaurant. It was formerly, many years ago, a, a factory. And then this is what Mr. Desmond is taking and turning into a performance center.
Anything else? Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
As of now, sorry, just one last question. So, as of now, it does not have any licenses attached to this location?
Mr. Chairman, there are no licenses. This is a local, local location.
Any kind of licenses? It's vacant right now?
It's been, it's, it's, I wouldn't call it vacant, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Desmond has the lease on it and has been working on it for some months to fix it up and to turn it into the intended use as the Magic Room Performance Venue.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could...
Can I say something?
Who's that speaking? Mr. Desmond?
Desmond?
I'm sorry if I'm buttoned in, because I can barely hear everybody, but the venue is to bring art and music in there in a performance-style way, not in a bar-style way. I, I know what the difference is, and I know what some of the concerns would, could be for them. This is going to be a really nice living room-type setting where Judy Collins may play. I've actually talked to the management. You know, the ticket would be, priced on that would be rather expensive, about $100. But, you know, I wanted to name drop there, but there are other, other acts that you may not be familiar with, like prog bands, like Tony Levin, who plays with Peter Gabriel. I know him personally. He's going to play there. So, we're talking real quality people playing at this place, not like, you know, some kind of a, you know, dirty pub where you have just anything going on over there. This is going to be a bright spot for that area. It's going to be a bright spot for Norwood, okay? And I was told by many people that Norwood was, had open arms for artists and for music and for the development of that. And that's one of the reasons I'm there. Plus, I knew Dave Dupree and one of the other owners, I knew, I mean, Jim Goldenberg. So, this is one of the reasons I came to that building. Also, the Dave Bieber Archives, which is basically a music museum, David and I know each other from being on radio in Boston for many years. And we're going to bring in acts, hopefully, like Andy DeFranco. I mean, just real quality stuff, okay? This is what we're shooting for. That doesn't mean we won't have some local bands and things like that as well. I mean, we want to try to leave, leave the space open for, for local bands that are aspiring to do stuff out there, you know, get their name known. But I, I don't want you to have the wrong idea about this thing, okay? And there's also a lot of extra parking that hasn't been talked about tonight around that property, although we don't. It isn't up there for us. But if they develop it, and it's two areas, they could put at least 80 more cars in. So, I don't know why that hasn't been brought up, but maybe they, they haven't been focused on it. Anyway, that's what I want to throw. I mean, you, you don't have to worry about this. This is going to be a very, very wonderful place, that everybody's going to be proud to come and hang out there and see some quality shows.
Thank you.
And that's it. And I know Mark Schubert knows that. He's, he knows music very well, as does your plumbing inspector. Their music follows. And the names that I put out to them, they do everybody. You're kidding me? And I'm like, you're kidding me? He said, no, this is what we're striving for. In the meantime, during COVID, we're woody, had to make the place nicer and nicer. And anybody's welcome to come over and check it out. I'd be more than happy to show you around. I happen to be in Vermont right now, next week, listen. Okay?
Techno, wonderful techno.
That's my two second.
Thank you. So, just for the record, before we go too far, and so it doesn't get lost, we mentioned it at the beginning, but I just want to repeat it now. These are two technically separate matters, the entertainment license and the alcohol license. And you want both separate, you want both together, but you also want either one separately, correct?
We certainly made the entertainment license, and we also want the alcohol license. They're separate licenses, Mr. Chairman, and I haven't heard too many questions that relate to the entertainment license. If there are concerns, we're happy to try to respond to them. If I could, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to cut you off, but I would like to, when you're done with your questions, maybe just respond to a couple of points. But you have the floor, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, go right ahead. Continue, please.
Well, I just want to, I think there are a couple of things. And I know Mr. Hajar has mentioned parking, and Mrs. Donahue, and it's always a concern. As we pointed out in the letter that I sent over to the board on Friday, the, Thursday, I think it was dated, I dropped it off Friday morning, yes. The letter of the 19 points out that we all recognize, and I'm referring also to the people on the call we had last week with Mr. Dupree, Mr. Halkeotis, and Mr. Walsh, and Mr. DeShane, all of us recognize that as the Space Center moves forward, we will have to look at whether additional uses or different uses may trigger the need for more parking. We're very mindful of that, and will, Mr. Dupree, I know, I think, listening to this, will be, continue to be mindful of that, and work with the town on that. Mr. Walsh is certainly the zoning enforcement officer, and has the main responsibility for that. Mr. Halkeotis was consulted, because as the town planner, and as the person that deals with the planning board most closely, these matters come before the planning board too, and he is helpful in weighing in on it. But the decision really is Mr. Walsh's, when permits are being issued based upon the zoning bylaw, subject to decisions, of course, of the planning board or the zoning board. So, we involved Mr. Halkeotis and Mr. DeShane, because they're very familiar with the bylaw, and with the requirements, and help to enforce those requirements all the time. And Mr. Walsh, I think, I don't really want to speak for him, but I suspect he welcomed them as part of that meeting. What we have here, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, is an application for a new business to come to town, and to do something that is new and exciting. Mr. Maloney used the word eclectic, talking about the Space Center. And what Mr. Desmond wants to do is to bring, really, class acts to the town. And I mean that, and it's an expression of class act, but these are class acts, classy acts, that would be recognized by people of a certain age. I know I mentioned Judy Collins, there's some younger acquaintance of mine, and she looked at me like, who's that? But somebody of my age, and the age of some of you on the board, I think know who Judy Collins is. I'm not sure that she's coming, but if she is, that would be a great show.
You must be thinking of a different board, Mr.?
In Alder.
In terms of, you know, as I say, I think the parking is fine. Also, with respect to the permits, Mr. Walsh asked a question because he couldn't find some paperwork related to it. I can tell you that the building, various inspectors from the building department have been through that property several times. I think Mr. Schubert had been there, Mr. Walsh had been there, I think plumbing and wiring inspectors have been there. They've all been there, and if there's some paperwork that Mr. Walsh needs, Mr. Desmond is already in touch with him about making sure that whatever paperwork Mr. Walsh needs will be provided. So, I don't think the board really needs to worry about that. The question is, do you hope this business come to town? And I realize there's competition, other people want this license also. But this is an opportunity to bring this type of business to town, to allow it to come in, hopefully prosper. It's an added feature of the Space Center, which I think has nothing but good, brought nothing but good to the town in terms of the redevelopment of what was a very sorry site before Mr. Dupree and his partners came on. So, we ask you to give great consideration to this, we appreciate the time. We certainly want and need the entertainment license, that's the business that Mr. Desmond is in, and we very much would like to have the alcohol license to go with it. So, if there are questions, I'll be happy to answer it, and if not, I'll be quiet, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hajar?
I move to close the hearing.
No, we should have closed the hearing, second. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, the hearing is closed. So, we have two matters. One is the entertainment license request by The Magic Room, and then we have the request for the license of alcohol, which we also have two other applicants for that we had the hearings on at our last meeting.
Question, please, in regard to procedure?
On procedure, yes.
Thank you. How are we going to handle the voting so that all three applicants get a fair?
As I said, I'm separating them at the beginning, so I'm going to see what the board's wishes are regarding The Magic Room's request for an entertainment license, and then we'll talk about whether we're going to issue the alcohol license to anyone, and if so, to whom. So, we'll handle those all together, those three applicants all together, and decide whether we're going to issue a license or not. But that will be separate from the entertainment license. Right now, I'd like any discussion or motions to approve or deny the requests from Magic Room, Rehearsal Services Inc., doing business with The Magic Room at 83 Moore Street, Unit 5A, for a seven-day-a-week alcohol license, excuse me, entertainment license, as I read to you earlier, what they intend to do down there. And the only other thing that's not on here, the board may or may not wish to consider, is hours of operation that would be permitted under that license.
Mr. Chair, I don't think we issue licenses without hours of operation on them, so we should.
Well, then, that's my suggestion, that the board wants to consider that.
Yep.
Mr. Hajar?
I move that we grant the entertainment license to the applicant with a closing time of 12:30 a.m.
Second?
How many days a week would it be?
The application, seven days a week.
The application says seven days.
Applications for seven days.
What time would be opening?
No?
The way they have it on the original application, it was 11 o'clock in the morning.
They indicate in the letter that Mr. Hearn sent us this afternoon, hours of operation, 6 p.m. They requested till 1, but start time is 6 p.m. They've indicated 6 p.m. in this letter. So, 6 p.m. to 12:30, did you say?
Yes.
Till 12:30 a.m.?
Yeah, 6 p.m., I'm sorry, Mr. James, 6 p.m. till 12:30 a.m., seven days a week.
Second?
On the motion?
Question, please, on the motion. Would the maker of the motion be willing to add that the, that these events only take place inside the premises, no outdoor concerts on the grass or in the parking lot?
They can only be in the area, license, and the license has been for inside that 5, what is it? 5, 5A.
5A, right.
So, could you please be kind enough to go over the terms again of the license?
Seven days a week, entertainment license for seven days a week, from 6 p.m. to 7:30 a.m.
What?
No.
6 p.m.
To 12:30 a.m. You said seven days.
I didn't say that, sorry.
No, that's okay. You were close, but not right there.
Seven days a week?
It's all indoors.
6 p.m., 12:30 a.m., closing.
Okay.
All right. Anything further, Ms. Delain?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is asking to, for the entertainment license till 1 a.m. currently?
Yeah, they asked for an application, hours of operation, 6 p.m. to 1 a.m., yes.
Okay, and we're asking to amend that to 12:30 a.m. I don't particularly have a problem with them opening till 1 a.m., but if it suits the board to change that to 12:30 a.m., I would vote along with it.
I'd be open to an earlier opening, but not, definitely not a later staying time.
All right. Anything further on the motion? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor issuing a license?
Aye.
As indicated? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one. So, now we'll move on to the matter before us of, on the new unfinished business, of an application for an AAB license to be consumed on the premises. We have three applicants for that license that we've held hearings on. Rehearsal Services, Magic Room, Vico Restaurante Italiano, and Gyro and Kebab House. We can issue two, one, obviously, we only have one license, or we can issue two, none. Ms. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, just, I do want to make a motion, just a couple of things as by way of preface. First of all, we're kind of in this situation because nobody, none of these three applicants, nor anybody else evidently approached the Hibachi people who owned it previously. So, I mean, they surrendered the thing for $0. Somebody could have this license for short money, and I guess they, for whatever reason, they thought it would be wiser to follow this course of action. Two of them probably are going to regret having done so. But in any event, I think that the, I think we might as well take them in order. I think Rehearsal Services has demonstrated their commitment to a responsible use of the license, and I do think that the business they're going to bring down there, for reasons that I mentioned earlier, particularly the synergy of the whole thing, and the ability to add to so much that's going on down at the Space Center, warrants giving them, awarding them this license. And so, my motion is that we award this all-alcohol license to Rehearsal Services, DBA, The Magic Room, and I ask for a second.
And are you going to add details at all to that motion, as far as it'd be as they applied for, with a closing time of 1 p.m., or are you putting a different time on?
I think we should put the closing time of 12:30, because we did that with the entertainment license, so the hours, I think, should be the same.
All right, so hours would be changed from what the application might say to opening at 6 p.m. and closing at 1 a.m., 12:30 a.m.?
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second for discussion purposes, because I want to hear what my other colleagues have to say, but I am not going to support the license for them at this time. But in deference to my colleague, I'll second for discussion purposes, so I can hear what everyone else wants to say.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Donahue?
Thank you. I think that I know, I would like to see that the Gyro and the kebab place, I move that they get the license, because they are already in operation now, and they have a common victualist license, and they have an operating business, which this license could help very, very soon. They have, the other applicant, Ficos, is a great place. They already have a beer and wine license that they got specially from the town. They got the first cordial license from the town. And the most pressing need is Gyro and Kebab House, because they just don't have any license at all. The rehearsal place hasn't had a license since 1987, and can get a future license. And they do have the entertainment license. They could get special one-day licenses, up to, I think, 35 a year, if they have a special concert. They could just apply for a one-day license until the COVID restrictions are lifted, and they could have more people in the room. If Kebab gets the license now, they can be in operation, as soon as it's approved by the Alcoholic Beverage Commission. We helped uptown with all the decorations around the center of town. We haven't helped Kebab and Gyro House on the highway. And it seems to be a matter of fairness and justice.
Thank you. Ms. Delain?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Mr. Maloney's point, I think with the Space Center and the development of that part of town, I've been really impressed with the work that's gone on, especially inside, as many of you know, with the Windsmith Mill closing. I think a lot of the people that were taking up space there, particularly artists, have found new homes in the Space Center. And I particularly helped someone move, and was just really impressed with all of the building systems and the upgrades and the maintenance there. And I'm just assuming and hearing from the applicant for The Magic Room, that, you know, things are being done above board, collaborating with the building department, and so that makes me really happy. I'm excited about the future of the Space Center, and I think this is a good addition to their, to the overall campus feel there, and the entertainment value that it could bring. So, you know, this evening, I don't think I'm ready to support an alcohol license, but it would not, does not mean that I wouldn't support one in the future. And I do think that the venue can be really special.
Mr. Hajar?
Yes, so, I want, first of all, what Matt said speaks, I think, for all of us in that they are doing a good job there. I think we've all acknowledged that they're doing a good job there, and I'm sure they will in the future to make that whole area a place where a lot of people are going to want to be located. I am concerned about what we talked about during the hearing, and that is the ability to actually open up and run a business today, tomorrow, or next week. And it's not going to happen. I think part of our responsibility is, when these licenses come up, is who is going to use them, and when are they going to use them, or how often are they going to use them? You don't want to give a license that someone can use every day would be better than someone who's going to use it once a week. But in this case, I don't even see the applicant being able to use it in the foreseeable future. So, I am concerned about that, and that's the main reason why I'm not going to support it. I think at some point in the future, it will be good to have them come back, maybe it's for a different license. And I want to expand upon what my colleague, Mr. Maloney, said about licenses available in the town, but everyone's waiting for them to come to, the board's selectmen, to divvy out. They're available. There's two that are out there today trying to be sold. You have Sky, and you have Allavattis, both who were given six-month extensions by this board to try to sell the license, and that, those folks asked for an extension so that they wouldn't come to this board that we would just give up. Why aren't these people trying to do it? It is available out there. I'm not sure what the price would be. I wouldn't necessarily go as high as what people paid for the license that.
Skating club.
The Skating Club of Boston paid for, but it's better than having them being turned in for zero, and then you take your chance. And that's what's happening. We have more people who want licenses that we can get out, but we're not, we're not the ones that control it entirely. The private industry controls it when they have it. It's only when they come to us that they don't. So, I urge the other restaurants, or other applicants, I should say, that if they're not granted one tonight, to try to seek out and make the best deal that you can. Otherwise, unfortunately, you have to wait your turn, or wait for like a beer and wine license that come up, or something else. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, just a comment on your comment, I think it's actually three licenses. But it's also Boncaldo, and Boncaldo, we've already given an extension on, and their period of time is coming to a close very quickly. Anything else on the motion for the license to go to The Magic Room? All in favor?
We didn't have a second.
Yes. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Motion loses four to one. Any other motions, Mr. Hajar?
I thought long and hard about this, going back and forth between the two of them. I'm going to move that we award the license, or approve a license for Vico Restaurante Italiano. This was a tough choice, both great operators have been in town operating a business. I think their better use right now is for downtown. I think we can come to terms with the Kebab House at some point shortly. But my motion is for awarding Vico Restaurante Italiano.
Second, do you have a time on that? Is there a second? Second. No, did you have a further comment?
No, just have to, if you hit the days and times.
Oh, yes.
On the application.
Do you have the application in front of you? I do not. I should have brought them, I'm sorry. I think it was Wednesday through Sunday, Sunday through.
We could ask the applicant.
Oh, actually, I think they want. Oh, actually, I think they wanted the license seven days a week because they do events or
That's right.
Private functions on the other days.
We don't have the hours.
Seven days a week request.
I don't think it's actually on this. I think that she might have told us that she wanted seven days a week. Can you ask her?
So, no, we've closed the hearing per se, but I would, what's, what's the typical every other license, restaurant license?
Usually, at least 11 to 11. Most of them, 11 to 12:30.
So, most of them are 12:30?
Yeah.
Question, please. Can we issue a license if not knowing the hours of operation?
Yeah, we set the hours. So if they said 12 o'clock and we're only going to give them 6 o'clock, doesn't matter what they said. They're going to take what we give them.
That's acceptable. Being consistent, we'll do seven days a week.
11 a.m. to 12:30 a.m.?
Yes.
Second, I'll, I'll accept that from this, okay? Anything further on the motion? All right. We had discussion, I guess, already. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries three to two. The license that is available is awarded to Ficos Restaurante Italiano, 89 Central Street. Difficult choice with three good applicants and only one license available, but we've done the task and it's time to move on. Thank you. Good luck to everyone.
Thank you.
Tony Mazuko, General Manager, submitting approval of the board appointment of Cheryl Doyle to the Historical Commission. That is subject to the board's approval.
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Julie Barber Isar has submitted a request for appointment to the Community Preservation Committee. If people aren't aware, I think we all are, John had to move out of town and created an opening. Motion to approve? Second.
On the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Similar to how we did the last round with the associate members for the ZBA, we waited until we actually had a handful of applicants, and then we allowed them to come in for, I know virtually, for an interview. I would request that we allow that process first before we approve anybody at this point. We haven't talked to Julie. I think we all probably know her. She's a very nice individual, but we should interview her as we have done others, or allow some time to advertise the fact that there is an opening in, on the CPC committee, and that we invite residents to submit a resume, wait a couple weeks, see if we get any others, and then set it up.
Well, personally, I think it's slightly different than the Court of Appeals because we have five, three, three openings on that committee, and people started to come forward at that time. Here, Julie's come forward specifically for this committee. She is, I see, present. If anyone wanted to ask her questions, be on her resume. And I think when we talked about having people in for interviews, it was said that that was, as I recall, was a good idea, particularly when there were people we don't know. I think we all know Julie, so I don't know any reason for delaying for a big formal interview. But at that time, but that being said, if anyone, I'm mistaken, and anyone does have questions who would like to ask her, she happens to be here this evening. I see her. So any, could ask her questions at this time. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Julie, for sticking around. We appreciate it. Just wondering if you could talk about your experience with the development of community parks, which seems like it would be relevant to this committee.
Hi, everyone. I can't exactly hear what the question was. I think it was about parks.
Yes, public parks or?
Yeah.
Your experience?
Yeah. Professionally, I am a civil engineer. I have worked on a number of public parks projects, including a little park over by the New England Aquarium, and some green space areas in the Longwood Medical Area. Professionally, I usually do a lot more work involving stormwater and drainage and utility design, but I have done a number of public parks projects.
Great.
Any other questions or any motions?
Motion to appoint.
Oh, you mean a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
And a second. Anything further on that motion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome to the committee. Thank you very much for stepping forward.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
All right. Next item is the Norwood Elks Club, 1124. They generously have donated $1,012 to the Norwoods Veterans Corner Memorial Project. Mary Welch and Shayla Welch spearheaded the fundraising down at the Elks, and with the support of their fellow members down there, they did great work. They raised some money for the 22 Mohawks, which is a local charity that brings awareness to the veterans group, and still had $1,012 to go towards the town's memorial corner, corner, corner memorial program. So I would hope that the board would vote to accept that, chapter 4453a donation, to be expended by the veterans' agent with the approval of the manager for the purposes indicated.
So, absolutely thanks.
Second. Absolutely, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Remember that little thanks. We'll send a little note along, please. Okay. I listed here UAV, LLC 973 University Ave. They have a new application for a special permit before the zoning board. And I attended that hearing. Actually, I know Mr. Maloney attended it as well. And there's some issues there that may be of concern and may be actually appropriate for this board to be involved in. However, we did have further discussion yesterday involving Town Council. It's a little more involved and complicated to make sure we either do the right thing or do nothing. We want to make sure that we are doing it properly, if anything. So we have time. The next hearing is until December 15th, so we'll work on that. And if there's anything we think is important for the board, as a board, to be involved with in this matter, we'll bring it back as a recommendation at December 8th meeting. Mr. Donahue?
Thank you very much for your concern in this matter, and thank you very much for your actions so far. The preservation of the wealth system is very, very important.
Thank you. So that's just information.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lane.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Admittedly, I did not finish watching the entire hearing on demand.
Oh, you missed the best part, then.
I did see, I just, the last few minutes. But I'm, I'm assuming from the way that you're speaking that it was continued with, without any kind of decision being made. Okay.
Until the 15th.
Wanted to confirm that.
All right. So Personnel Board reclassification request. I think we put that on at your request, Mr. Jah.
Yes. So, I think we all got an email regarding some upcoming Personnel Board reclassification request, and I think it was in regards to whether it was the DPW for the business manager. But my concern, I, I had a discussion with the General Manager about this, just to make sure that we're not looking to hurt anybody. But this subject came up a short while ago, and we talked about seeing if they would hold off on any classification requests, I'm sorry, reclassification requests, until we determine if we, if the town was going to support an overall study. And I know we have money in one of the articles to support, I think, $165,000 for a total review of the classification system. And, but that got pushed out now to January, so it wasn't dealt with in December. And these things were scheduled thinking that that would have already taken place, but it hasn't. I'm suggesting that we actually send a letter to the Personnel Board requesting that they hold off until the town determines if we're going to move forward with the study. If they don't, if we don't vote the funds, they can continue with the reclassification hearings. That's the right thing to do for the individual. If we, if the town main does vote for that, then we should wait until it's all done. I can just tell you from my 11 years of experience on that board, the more reclassifications you do, you create, over time, you're creating so many inequities. And since we haven't done one since 2004, we have a lot of inequities. And I think we're not trying to hurt any individual by denying them the ability to have a reclassification request. And I know all of them don't get approved for review. But in this case, I, my thinking is, I really don't want to see any further reclassifications until the town decides what it wants to do with the whole classification issue. So that's my request. And if you need into a motion, Mr. Jim, I'll make it, but I don't know how the others feel.
I'll second it.
Second for discussion. Any further discussion? Maloney?
Just so I understand, so, so, does this mean, though, that the, let's assume that we set the special town meeting in January, and let's assume that town meeting approves the motion to spend the money for the study. The study would then take several months, do you think? So, so anybody who's entitled to, the Personnel Board feels entitled to a reclassification would have to wait?
Well, if, if I can, I think we need to distinguish between a reclass and a classification. No one is suggesting that if Tony was bringing in a brand-new employee with a brand-new type of position, that it does need to be rated, so we put that person in the right shoe, even if it's out of bounds. You still have to put them in, in something. These are reclasses. These are just people who think that they're doing more work than what their job description entails today, and the Personnel Board has to make a judgment of whether to do that. But they create inequities when you have now 16 years before the last, was it 2004?
At the, thereabouts, yeah.
So, we're creating a system that is unequal, and I think just approving these is going to create even longer. I, I don't see the issue of a reclass as being held off at this point.
All right. So, but I mean, so
I mean, when we came before the board for money four years ago, that, that was the plan. We would have to hold off. And we did until we got approval or not approval. And once the decisions were made to, no, we're not going to approve funding for a whole reclass study, we continued on with the reclasses. That's, that, that's the fairway. But if we're going to do one, then let's not have the madness continue.
Do you think, though, that the study would directly impact the reclassification process? I mean, I assume it's going to affect the classification process, but reclassification is, as you say, somebody says that I ought to be, I ought to be boosted up the scale because my job has evolved over time, or, or something like that, right?
I, I do, because what the reclass is going to review are existing position descriptions to make sure that they're current in today's environment versus from, most of them were done in 2004. They probably don't, you know, correctly state the employees' jobs, duties, and responsibilities. And we all know that job position descriptions don't say 100% you, you are highlighting the specific important ones. And so what often happens is someone will come to the Personnel Board and say, okay, I'm doing these 10 different things. I want my position description upgraded. And, and I know Tony is required to, I mean, the General Manager, I'm sorry, is required to submit a letter of support for all of these, or it won't go forward. I just think that we, we should wait, knowing until January what this is, what's going to happen. They will be out of bounds, and it will affect every job description. We can't say it won't. It will. But at least it'll look at where we need to be, and some may go up and some may go down.
Mr. Donahue?
That doesn't mean you're going to change where they are. They'd be grandfathered. You're not going to, they would be redlined. You're not going to lower someone's salary. That's just not going to happen. It didn't before.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thinking this over, it's the end of, almost the end of November, and so we have a month or two. It's highly unlikely, in the whole course of a year, how many people come and ask for the reclassification?
There's been quite a few lately.
Ballpark.
There's two, there's two pending right now.
Two? And how many for the entire year, though?
I don't know. Maybe another half dozen?
Not, not more than six, probably.
No, probably not more than six.
So, I don't think we have a big problem here, you know? If an individual feels that strongly about it within the next two months, then this is America. They have the right to bring it. And I think that we should just proceed along and try and get the whole study passed.
Yeah. The, just changing a job description doesn't necessarily mean anyone's pay should change either. It may still be work that's appropriate for their class, and it should be in their, in their job description, but doesn't mean they should get paid. Usually, they're looking for more pay for what they're doing, and that's up to the Personnel Board. That's why we have a Personnel Board. It is true, as Mr. Jah said, that over time inequities appear as vigilant as the Personnel Board tries to be as they do their work. Over time, this happens, and that's acknowledged even in the bylaw where it talks about having it updated, I think it's every 10 years. And they haven't, we haven't done that, and probably because it's money and people don't want to ask for it too often. But eventually, you have to realize it really is out of whack. So that's definitely support for doing the study. I was really concerned with some of these going forward and had some conversations myself with the HR Director about the timing and notifications and so forth. And I originally suggested, why don't these just wait? We're going to town meeting. We're going to get the study. Why take the chance of taking two more positions and putting them out of whack as well? If we're saying we're not sure, if we've got them right, we're going to hire professionals, why don't we do it for all positions, including these two? That said, we're probably not going to have town meeting until late January, possibly early February, the way things are moving along. The study will then take probably four to six months. So I don't know if it's really right to hold up these two at this time when the delay, when we think about it, includes the study time itself, and just rely on the zoning board, as we do all the time, to, Personnel Board, excuse me, to, to do their job. I tend to want to go along with this holding off, but I also have some concerns whether that is going to be fair and appropriate for the employees and the, and the process. I think we may be better to move forward and rely on the Personnel Board to, to do the right thing. And if they think it should be, it can be held off, should be held off to do so, or to not approve them and wait for, to see what happens during the reclass. But, you know, we have the different boards to do the different jobs. And I, I'm a little concerned that people aren't getting notices necessarily about these reclasses so we could go to the hearings. We used to get them. We don't, but it's not actually required. It was, it was a policy, not the bylaw. But those are separate issues from the, from the fairness to the applicants, and whether they should be reviewed at this time or not.
I withdraw the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I just had an additional question.
All right. Guess I was going to pass three to two. All right.
No, it's not.
Comments, or?
No, I'm fine.
So, you want to withdraw that motion?
I would, yes, I withdraw the motion.
All right.
Would we be in favor of submitting a request after these two, that they not accept anymore?
That's a new motion.
Yes. Well, because we don't want to harm the people that we say have submitted, and they're waiting, but we can certainly say not to accept.
Recommend that they hold off on accepting any further applications?
Yes.
Notifying department heads that they have a hiatus. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it, then. Okay. I, I get them. I guess, David, I mean, if, if, if the, if the conclusion of the study were imminent, I'd have no problem supporting it. I'd say, well, it's just, I, I kind of, I'm kind of a little worried about the timeframe here, too. So it could be three months before we bring the matter to town meeting, and then another six months
Four to six.
Before the, the study is concluded, during which time the Personnel Board is hamstrung. They, they, you know, applications could come in and say, I'm sorry, we can't help you. We might think it's fully justified, but we can't, I mean, it's their choice. We're not telling them. They have to do it.
Right.
I understand. But, I mean, that's the only thing. Otherwise, I, I think it makes sense. I'm going to, certainly going to support the, the study. But I think it, this, as Bill says, when we have a, we have a Personnel Board, you know, let them do it. I mean, they're the ones who should be mindful of the study. They themselves might agree and say, no, we're, we're not, we're not going to entertain any more of these right now.
Okay. That's fine. So I withdraw that motion, too. I'm just trying to get the pulse of what people feel about, so that's fine.
Okay. So that motion is withdrawn. No other motions. We'll move on to the next subject. Next subject is liquor regulations, and that was by Mr. Jah as well. He's been working on this for a while. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. So, a lot of good feedback from different individuals about what's in the packet. I, before you leave tonight, I will give you a one-page row of additional changes being proposed, but but based on feedback, including from Town Council, who has looked at them, again, specific to questions that individuals on the board have raised, and feedback from Chief Brooks as well. So I think we're really, really close to having a set of regulations that we would feel comfortable voting on. It's not this set, but I will be sharing with you the next version, which I think will clean up some of the issues raised since the last last one. And I would hope that we would be then be able to have an open discussion and a vote, maybe in two weeks, Mr. Chairman, if everyone agrees that we've sort of taken care of all the tweaks and language changes that people wanted to see again. Town Council has looked at this and made his updates known, as well as Chief Brooks. So I feel very comfortable whether we want to vote on it and then send it out, or whether we invite and have a meeting, doesn't really matter to me. To me, it's important that we have a set of regulations to back up what we want that might be different than what the state has, and let them know that this is out there and that they need to follow it when they obtain their license for the upcoming year.
Okay, so, Mrs. Dunne here?
Thank you, Mr. Hajar, for all your work on that. That's a lot of work you've put into it.
So from what I just heard and what's been going on behind the scenes of you trying to get as much information as you can, I think we're ready to vote, but not necessarily tonight, because you've made some final changes there you want to get to us.
Yes.
But we'll put it on the agenda for our December eighth meeting. And at that point, I think we should be ready to vote up or down, and we're going to have regulations or not, and if we are, what they're going to look like.
Great.
Mr. Maloney?
Just a couple of just a couple of questions on the matter of practicality, more than anything, because the biggest concern I have about this is that we're not making a whole lot of new law. But, you know, if there are certain things we agree should be done, we can put them together. My first question is, should we do it now? I mean, a lot of the license holders who are going to be directly impacted are struggling at the moment. Do we want to be passing a set of regulations in the middle of a pandemic? Right? Just a question. Let's say, let's say, you think about it, but you get two weeks to think about it. Secondly, if we're going to cite DeLuca, David DeLuca and Chief Brooks, shouldn't we have them speak to us, too?
Could I ask them to send a letter if they've reviewed it, if they have any comments on it or supports of it?
And then finally, the last question is just, do we, David, you alluded to this, do we want to distribute these this draft? We vote on a draft, say, distribute it to the license holders? Can we get some feedback from the industry who's going to be directly impacted by this new set of regulations? Does that make sense to do that?
Why don't we, if you want to make a motion, why don't we look at it as getting that draft out? I'm sure Mr. Hajar can do it quickly, the changes. Ask Mr. Melvahill to get it out to the licensee with a cover letter saying, we're considering adopting these at our December eighth meeting, and if they have any comments, get them to this by that time.
Okay, I think it I think it would be better for us to vote on a draft on the eighth, and then send it out as a draft, not the, and then, and then.
Oh, you want to send it out afterwards?
I mean, I think.
Just a tight timeline to get feedback if we just.
Well, that it doesn't get done immediately. There's no, there's no, we've been working on it for a long time. I just said, I would rather send out something complete rather than, we've got so many iterations of this thing, we probably should vote and say, look, this is a good draft of what we think at the moment is good. What do you all think about it? Let us know.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Makes sense, we'll wait off till the eighth, then, and then after that, anticipate that we're going to be sending it out for comment before making it finalized.
Yeah, I mean, I think getting the attorney and the police chief in front of us would probably be a good idea, so we don't hear the same thing, but I'll leave it up to you all.
Okay, is that all right with everyone? So I'll put it on the agenda for the eighth, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
I abstain.
This is Stunney who is abstaining from that matter. All right, clerk, Selectman's Clerk, there's a copy of a notice in your packet. We've indicated on the agenda that it's Selectman's Clerk, but it went off to the right licensees, the alcohol licensees with my name on it. And basically, the ABCC has sent out some regulations, new regulations, all related because of COVID. And beyond that written notice, they had a go-to meeting, public hearing, not public hearing, but hearing for licensees or license, eight licensers, ourselves, who issued the licensing authorities, to understand exactly what they are, and if there was any questions on them. When that was over, Mrs. Melvahill and I attended that, and afterwards, we thought it would be good just to send out a reminder to our licensees of the important points that they might need to make sure they are aware of, and just provided you with a copy of what we sent out. There's additional matters that the ABCC brought up that have to do with outdoor licensing, outdoor use, but until we have some further discussion on extending beyond December that we've already voted, we don't need to address that at this time, so we'll leave that in abeyance for the future. So that's just information.
Information filed.
All in favor, opposed, unanimous. Seb Housing and Avneedam submitting a correspondence regarding their Metfield Meadows condominiums, affordable housing, and applications on how to apply if anyone might be feel they're qualified and interested.
Information filed.
All in favor, opposed, unanimous. Chief William Brooks, probably should have brought this up while he was here, he submitted a copy correspondence that he sent to Lieutenant Haddon, Officers Murphy, Mahoney, Bogum, McDonough, Rooney, Hoyle, Carmichael, recognizing their hard work in organizing the trick-or-treat drive through Norwood High School.
Information filed on the motion, Mr. Chairman. I think the chief did actually cover that.
He did, yeah, yeah. He covered it, you're right. All in favor, opposed, unanimous. Greg Frank, senior manager from Comcast, once again, notified, copy of notice going out to customers about fee increases. Information filed?
So moved.
All in favor, opposed, unanimous. Travis Fowley, superintendent of Recreation, a monthly report.
Information filed.
All in favor, opposed, unanimous. Mr. Manager, anything to bring up at this time, sir?
Yes, if I could, just a moment. I did have an extensive report listing out answers to any requests or questions or recommendations the board had over the last six months or a year. Given the hour, I will dispense with that extensive report, and we'll assume that that has all been taken care of. One short update and one medium update. The town clerk's office will be closed in the month of December on Thursdays and Fridays. We've had a backup of time that needs to be taken in that office. They have not been able to take time in that office since this spring, so in an effort to facilitate that, the office will be closed on Thursdays and Fridays for December. The second item I want to bring up is, as you know, the board declared that November, that this month is Shop Small Month. We have friends at Norwood Center doing a this fall Shop Small campaign, and we've decided to rebrand Norwood Day for this year. We could not have our traditional Norwood Day, of course, with the community getting together. So this fall, we're asking everyone to join us this coming Saturday for a new version of Norwood Day, where you were asking folks to eat local, shop local, wear local, and do something good locally to help promote all of our local businesses who are here for us in good times and in tough times, and we want them, of course, to be here. We are running a special promotion. There are limited edition Norwood Day 2020 buttons. These are special edition Norwood Day buttons, limited edition. The only way to get a limited edition Norwood Day 2020 button, especially for all the collectors out there, is you have to participate in Norwood Day, and you can do that this year on Saturday by going to a local business, buying something local. We'd like folks who are on social media to send out a picture, put it out on social media. You can buy things locally, you can leave good reviews on websites for restaurants and shops locally. We're asking folks to wear something local, again, trying to promote a lot of this through social media, encouraging people into local shops and restaurants. We're also asking you to do good locally, if you're able to. You can give a donation to any number of the different charities and civic groups we have in town. If you're able to, those are also a big help. And just let us know through the Rec Department or through social media that you did, and we'll be able to get you a button. There will be buttons available at a number of businesses throughout town. They've already distributed them through about twenty businesses. The button will be good to get you into Norwood Day next year, so this is your once-in-a-lifetime chance to get this special button, unique way. But we really do want folks to please go out and support local businesses and shop local. You're not just going to get one for asking one there. They're under a tight key. You have to participate in the program. I want to see the tweets out there and the pictures and everything, but just please, we're encouraging everyone to just support our local businesses and our small businesses as much as they possibly can all throughout the year, but especially as we're in Small Business Saturday and our version of Norwood Day, please go out there and support small local businesses in town. And that's all I have. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
No questions, thank you very much. Anyone else? Mrs. Dunne here?
Thank you. These are our personal agenda now?
Yeah, if you have any.
Could somebody please help me with an update on the taxi cab service here in Norwood?
Mr. Hajar?
It's on my list, so yes.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, great, so I continue to get calls from probably the same seniors looking where we stand, and I thought we were closer to a set of hacking regulations that we, updating hacking regulations that we could vote on. I'll probably have a draft out to everybody for a 12-8, not not ready for a vote, but to get some feedback from all of you. We have no licensed taxi cabs in Norwood today, and the one that did provide service for a number of years that was licensed was Veterans Taxi. They are no longer in business, and they have officially notified us. But there are two taxi cab firms that have expressed interest in submitting for a license application, Just Right, or Just Right Ride, and Family Taxi. So they both are unlicensed, but when I talked to them about doing some business in town, they both agreed that they would like to submit an application for a license, but since we were in the middle of updating the regulations, as well as the licensing application, to make sure we got the steps in the right order, so you'll have something by the eighth.
Thank you. When when we do, do we have a right to impose some conditions about fees?
We do.
We set the fees.
So so that would be a good thing, because I've got all these reports about people being charged you serious fees.
How, let me clarify, unless you would like to.
No, go ahead.
The local pick up at your home and take you to Shaw's, take you to Norwood Hospital when it was operating, we set that fee. If they picks you up at your house and take you to Logan Airport, they can charge whatever they want to charge.
Right, that's the, the only ones I'm concerned about are the local ones. That's my concern. That was one question. Another thing, a lot of calls about an update on the hospital. So what I'd like to ask our fellow board members, if we could please invite the hospital in here to one of our meetings to talk to the citizens of the town of Norwood about the progress that they're making. And there are some of the buildings being used now and by the public, and I think that they owe us an explanation of what their, you know, what their thoughts are and what the progress is, and I think it's much more fair if they come in and talk to all of us.
They have indicated a lack of desire to do that at this time. They have their own business reasons. They're willing to come and speak to us in the relatively near future, but not until some matters that they're dealing with are taken care of first. I think they're overly cautious, there's no need for it, but their positions, they feel they have the need before they come and make a lot of public statements, that they have to wait some time to get to get past a certain juncture of their process. But we will certainly extend that invitation and get them here as soon as possible.
So we were willing to, you know, we were willing to go ahead and do the fastest that we could to help them out, and and life is always a two-way street, you know? They're going to ask us for great changes in the locate, in the outlook of our town, and town meeting will have to support them if we want to keep the hospital. So I think it would be kind and courteous if if we had some general information.
Well, Ms. Mizuka and I have made that point strenuously, and we'll get them in as soon as we can, but don't expect it at the next meeting.
So thank you. So the other thing, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody about all the condolences about the loss of my brother. So many people have been very, very kind. Thank you to the fire department and the people who helped him and the ambulance, and we appreciate it very, very much. And to the residents of the town of Norwood, we have Thanksgiving, Happy Thanksgiving, even though, even though this is a very different way that we've ever celebrated Thanksgiving before. Hopefully, next year will be better, so I hope that we can all hang in there and just hope for better days. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Hajar?
Just a couple of things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I wanted to thank all the town meeting members that that came and stayed. Thank goodness it was a short program. It went over very well, certainly thanks to our own chairman, working with David Hearn and Tony Mizuko and Mary Lou and her entire staff for making a successful night of it. You would hate to think that running a town meeting has to be declared successful, but in these times, absolutely it was, and thanks for everybody for putting in the time, and thanks for all the town meetings that.
Excuse me, this is Valentina, again, with a Garen Kebab House. Any questions from the public, or is it a closed meeting at this point?
It's all closed, that meeting's closed. We've moved on well beyond that. That meeting is closed.
The meeting is closed.
That's closed. The license was issued to Vicos, and we're beyond, and we've gone beyond that issue.
Okay, I understand, but could you tell me why? Can someone answer me why? And why are they even allowed to lie if they already have beer and wine?
Ma'am, you're interrupting a meeting. We had a public hearing that was all discussed, that was all discussed open openly, and we're now in the middle of a meeting beyond that point. So we're not going to stop at this point, we're going to move on. Mr. Hajar has the floor.
So the one other thing I wanted to mention about taxes was that, thank you to Tony's staff, they're doing an actual study in comparing our rates and fees with the neighboring towns, just so we can see where we stand, and we will highlight those to see if you feel adjustments should be made to make us not necessarily more competitive, but maybe more reasonable. Everyone got the S and P report regarding where we stand. I'm going to urge my colleagues to read certain portions of it, because there was some items in there that were a little disturbing, and maybe it was the way they worded what they wrote, but there were some assumptions indicated in this report that differ from the past, specifically regarding the pension and whether we're using the right type of calculation or not, and certainly, this report stated something different.
If I could, the retirement board's well aware of that. They've used a 7.75% projected growth on the pension fund for many years. It's a, it's an aggressive number. They're aware that you should look to call that number down. Ultimately, it's sort of their calls to what they choose. I know this year, they're going to pick a, we're going to see a higher increase, is they going to look to address that, but it's been that same number for quite a while.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting I knew what that number should be, I'm just trying to say that there's a big variance between what actually goes on and what the report is pointing out. They mentioned information that says, while, they're talking about the upside scenario for the outlook, and says, while unlikely because of the current macroeconomic conditions, if management were to formalize and strengthen its current management policies and practices and experience reductions in retirement liabilities, coupled with improvement of available reserves to levels we consider commensurate with those of higher-rated peers, we could raise the rating. I don't know. It's different than what I've seen in the past, and I thought we did great strides in having a set of formal, at least financial policies that we, this board with the Finance Commission, the Managers Office, and School Department, to come up with a set of really good policies that don't seem to be reflected in this review. And there's some others, I won't bore you, but I think you should all take a look at some of the stuff in here, and I know that it's going to be talked about at some meeting, I think with the Finance Commission, and Mark Gooden, I'm sure Tom and Tony's office, just to see, but just a word of concern that I'm, I think, needs to be talked about.
So I think you're, you might not be interpreting it the way they are. We're at double A plus, and they're saying, these are the things, if you actually did them, would get you to that triple A spot that we want to do. So an example of that is, we this year are trying to make an extra catch-up to the pension fund. If we put that in writing that we're going to do that every year, that's what they want to see. Those are sort of the goal-level things. Those are sort of the goal-level things that they want to see. We're, in theory, going to be fully funded by 2029 or 2032 on the pension system. We're doing good. What they're saying is, "This is how you get to the AAA credit rating," which is what we want. I mean, at the end of the day, it comes down to fund balances.
They do not identify what we should be doing to get to that next level. They just point out the weaknesses and why we can't get to the next level. I'm looking for that step, exactly what you just said. I'm looking for someone to say, the people who write this report, who are supposed to help us get to that next level, to say, "This is what you should do." And if it's as simple as writing out what you just said for that pension or for the stabilization fund, then let's have it say it so that we can all be on the same path of, this is what we need to go to get to AAA, that we all can understand that, but it does not say that at all.
The key in that word is, in interpreting a financial document like that, is that word "practices." It's about putting the money in there. We know what we need to do. They know what they need to do. 95% of that AAA rating is a ton of money in the bank, and we haven't even caught the stabilization fund up to where it was before we took money out for the DPW. We're almost there, but by our own policies, it's going to take us a couple more years to get there. So when you read between the lines, that's what they want to see for AAA credit rating, is throwing a ton of money in there. We haven't increased our OPEB contribution as a base amount in several years. They'd like to see us aggressively actually doing some of the things we really want to do. There's a few other provisions of our financial policies that are good when it comes to OPEB. We haven't quite gotten there yet because it puts a strain on the budget, the operating budget. So that's what they're saying, is put your money where your mouth is and actually start throwing money into these things that we'd love to do, it's just a matter of if it comes into competition with everything else.
Agreed. And we've talked about having a longer-term look at some of the financial goals of what we're trying to achieve, and that needs to be outlined. We can talk about it, and we can say it year over year, but actually documenting, saying, "This is what our plan is. We're going to try to live up to the best that we can with it, and if we don't succeed, fine, but at least we should have a plan that said, 'This is what we're going to do over the next 10 years to address all these different issues, and let's try to live by it.'" But we haven't got there yet, and I think that's what I'm reading out of this, too, is we need to do that.
Well, some of those things are in our plan, and they helped us put that plan together. They reviewed, or at least the original one. I'm not sure if this most recent version was run by them, but the basic goal that we set and everything and the plan that we had...
Right, but so it talks about...
So as Mr. Mizuko said, it's one thing to have a plan, it's another thing to carry through with it. They want to see the payments, they want to see the investment, they want to see the town actually doing what it said it's going to do.
As an example of this, I think you're going to see the pension dollar amount go up this year, our contribution, by a little over $900,000. So that's a substantial increase to make sure we're still maintaining that fully funded schedule.
Then you've got to maintain it, right?
Correct. So they're going to like to see that, but that's $900,000 we don't have for everything else. So the plan is there, we're making progress, it's just coming up with the additional dollars to really make those OPEB contributions that they want, among other things.
I'm sure we can talk more about the soft line rather than take up time here, but I would just rather see the actual plan meet with what people are recommending, and if we end up not living up to it, then okay, we couldn't because of a particular year that we didn't bring in as much revenue to satisfy all the requirements, okay, but at least we have goals of what that 10-year plan should look like, and that's all I'm suggesting. So moving on. The BACH awards, are we, how we, the BACH fund?
Yes.
So how are you planning on handling it?
Oh, I thought I'd find a fit, no. I have to usually go over it with the staff, Mrs. Melvahill in particular, look at our schedule, and then announce for people to, might be interested, get their applications into us, and then we review it for a week or two, and then we make an award. I'd say that we kind of slipped since it was donated and haven't made that plan yet, so we'll work on that.
Okay.
It was on the computer, on the town of Norwood website.
Oh, you already posted it and didn't even tell me. What a girl, huh?
On the town of Norwood website.
We usually have, in time for your agenda to be called, so by the 8th, you'll have those tomorrow Friday before that meeting.
All right. So by the 8th, we'll have them, and then from there, we'll work forward to actually making awards.
Actually, you'll have them before your meeting on the 8th, make the award open.
Oh, we'll get them over that weekend if we want to do it on that Tuesday, the 8th. We'll be able to, because we've had them over the weekend.
Right.
Okay. Or whenever we choose.
So knowing each chairman does it a little bit differently, is, are you doing it as a group vote, or how are we doing it this year compared to?
Well, the last several years, it's been the chairman getting input from all the members, doing the best he can, because everyone has different points of view, to try to meet as many of those requests as possible, as fairly as possible, and then make the final decision, and usually, the board has then accepted that decision, that spread of the funds.
Okay, that's fine. And last, I want to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving, whether you're able to get together with your family, not get together with your family, virtually, in person, whatever it is, just stay safe and have a great, great, Happy Thanksgiving day and evening, because I'm sure it'll go through the night.
You're going to have a lot of leftovers, because the 21 people aren't going to be there.
I know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Maloney?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. I'll be brief. Presidents of the Norwood Diamond Club, His Eminence, the Pope Ed Hickey, sends this letter addressed to me but intended for all of us. On behalf of the Norwood Diamond Club, I'd like to express our appreciation to Mark Ryan and the DPW, and to Travis Farley and the Recreation Department for their help with our recently completed fall baseball program. He goes on to describe the program. He also wants to thank Howie Weinstein for his help. Please pass along any thanks to everyone concerned, in difficult times like these, folks prove how great Norwood is exclamation point.
Always nice to receive those kind of letters.
Let's see. In my remarks earlier, I neglected to congratulate Officer Paul Murphy, so Happy Days, Officer Murphy. I know him, and I know his brother Brian even better, and the Murphy family, as we know, has contributed so many years of service to the Police Department, but Happy Retirement and Happy Days to Officer Paul Murphy. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I'm sorry there's no football game this year to watch, but aside from that, we'll make the most of it, and thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Question, please?
Mrs. Stunney here.
In the event a person doesn't have a computer, where could they get an application for the BACH fund, please?
Will they be calling, or mailing to them, or they pick up a town hall, the radio station has them in a car copy?
Thank you. Thank you so much. So if you don't have a computer, call the Selectman's Office, and they'll mail one to you for the BACH fund. And you have to have it in by?
I believe it's December 4th.
That's the Friday, right? You want it that Friday?
Friday, December 4th. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Melvahill.
All right. Mr. Ryan?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Anything else?
Meeting December 8th is the next meeting, correct?
Yes. Okay. Anything else? Oh, let me run that by the board before I ask for that, anything else? No one was picking up on it. We've been meeting every other week.[1751.21]